Hi, everyone. Good evening. So, welcome to our combined open meeting of the Northborough School Committee, Southborough School Committee, Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee, and the Northborough-Southborough Superintendency Union Number Three. It is Wednesday, December 3rd, 2025. The time is 5:31 PM, and we do need to call into session. When we do any type of voting tonight, we'll go in our typical order. So, the Northborough School Committee, then Southborough Region, and Union. So, first, I'd like Bryce to call on the Northborough School Committee.
Calling the Northborough K-38 School Committee at 5:31. We have three members present and one remote.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Southborough is in order at 5:31 with four out of five members in person.
Paul, can you take it away for Region?
Sure, I'll call the Region into order with a number of members present.
There's eight members.
And some absent.
And Jones.
And Joan remote.
And I'll call the Superintendency Union Number Three into session. Four out of the six member, I'm sorry, five out of the six members are present, and the time is 5:32 PM. This evening, we're going to start with our public comments. I invite members of the public to join us. I think that the location that would be best would be, hmm, actually Laura, do you mind just moving there just for a moment?
Absolutely.
So, maybe at the end of this table, that would be perfect. And if you could state your name and address, and Bryce is going to be our timekeeper as the Vice Chair of the Union, and so we do have three minutes per participant this evening. I saw these members walk in first. Would you like first opportunity to speak? Would you like to come up and speak?
I just did the whole long run through the hallway.
You had your steps.
I did, the running steps. So, I'm Amanda Jabo, 80 Little Pond Road, Northborough. Some of you might recognize me or have seen an email from me. So, I'm here tonight to speak about the 2026-2027 draft calendar that you'll be discussing as part of the agenda. I'm speaking in favor of removing the religious holidays from the calendar for next year and in the future. I did send an email yesterday, and some of you may have seen that, but I just wanted to reiterate some of the key points and provide some additional insights. So, I think first of all, so we are a public school district. Our district has a very generous and flexible religious and cultural observance policy. I've heard people say, well, Christmas is on the federal holiday calendar. But I'm here to tell you, Christmas is a secular holiday. If you drive around any of our towns, tell me how many nativity scenes, manger scenes you see compared to how many Frosties and Santas. So, I don't feel like that's a good argument as to why we couldn't align with the federal holiday calendar. Secondly, I feel like we really need to support working parents and caregivers. It is very burdensome and costly to find childcare on those days, better days off, especially for the younger kids. And it's really disruptive to work schedules. So, I work from home. Having the kids at home is very disruptive. My employer does not give me off those days, and I do not get flexible, you know, holidays to cover all those things. So, I would have to take, you know, paid time off, which means I can't take as much vacation with my family in the summer or things like that. So, I feel like it really would support working parents to have those holidays removed from the calendar. I think, you know, thirdly, it's learning continuity. So, I have a student at Peaslee and a student at Melikan this year. This week is the third full week of school for them since the beginning of the school year, for both of them to actually be in a full week of school. And that's really surprising to me. So, I think, you know, I've heard people say that students won't, won't, sorry, students will learn or appreciate these holidays if they're out of school on those days. I can tell you, speaking for my kids, they see it as a day off of school. They want to go to the trampoline park. They, you know, and I have to work. I mean, I can't teach them about those things. So, I really feel like the wellness days should be brought back as full days. No significant assignments, no significant tests or homework should be given, and maybe part of that day, there could be a lesson on what this holiday is about, just something really small. My kids would get so much more out of that than just by having those days off of school. Another proposal maybe for the committees to consider is to strategically place the professional development days on a couple of those holidays and then rotate them from year to year, so that over time, everybody's holiday gets observed, and on the years that your holiday is not observed, you utilize the religious observance policy and take an excused absence as a student or as a staff member. So, going back to my email that I sent, I did include a petition that has been signed by 153 individuals, individuals from various religious affiliations, various cultural backgrounds. So, there is a lot of support from this, not just from people who, you know, you think would be like the mainstream. There are other people who are in support of this as well. And then lastly, I would just like to say that, you know, I came up and I spoke to this committee during the discussion in March as we were preparing for this year's calendar, and I heard a lot of the committee members say that the reason that they were voting the way that they were was because of the voice that they had heard from the community. And at that time, the community's voice was in support of adding these holidays.
We are at time, we can just wrap up. Thank you so much.
Yep, I will. Holidays to the calendar. So, I just respectfully request that you consider the 153 individuals who have signed the petition as you discuss the calendar and make a decision going forward.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you very much, Lauren. Thanks, everybody. Mitch Cohen, 12 Whitney Street here in Northborough. I, as most of you know, I've spoken many times in favor of retaining the religious observances. I want to thank the school committees for voting for the calendar that was placed into service this year. It's great. Expanding those holidays was the right thing to do. Recognizing and appreciating the wide variety, the wide diversity of cultures and religions that we have in Northborough and Southborough is the right thing to do. I imagine you've probably also received additional applicants for positions from people. I will say, my daughter now works, graduated from Algonquin last year, now works in a school district that does observe all the same holidays that are now on your calendar. I encourage you to continue that practice that was begun, that was really strengthened for the community. I want to thank Greg for putting together just one school calendar draft, the draft to the packet for this coming year. I think it's a great calendar. One thing that's interesting to note, and this is a little bit of luck for this coming year, is there's only one of those religious holidays that falls midweek. Rosh Hashanah is a Saturday for that school calendar, so it doesn't affect the school calendar. Yom Kippur's on a Monday. Good Friday, of course, is a Friday. And Eid happens to be a Wednesday in April. So, that's the only one, at least that I could find on the calendar, that caused any sort of interruption, you know, at a midweek, you know, Wednesday is probably the best holiday, it's going to be a midweek one. I am certainly familiar with the petition that was put out there. The names on that are generally public on the change.org website. By my reading, about 60 to 70% of the names of the people who signed that are not voters, not residents of Northborough or Southborough. Obviously, there are some people that want the convenience of having their school, school year as quick as possible and things like that. This isn't a convenience issue for those of the Jewish faith, Muslim faith, Hindu, any of the other faiths that you're now honoring. So, I would ask and encourage you to take Greg's recommendation and tonight approve the draft of school calendars presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any more audience members who would like to present at public comments? All right, so seeing done, we're going to move on to the Superintendent's 2025-2026 evaluation and hear about his mid-cycle review. Thanks, Greg.
Sure. So, thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on progress toward my goals. It is hard to believe that it's December of 2025, and we'll be turning the calendar shortly to May 6th. So, a lot of great work has been accomplished since August by many people. So, we have an amazing central office leadership team, we have wonderful principals, and we have outstanding educators. And in working together, we move the work forward. As you know, the goals that I did set align with the strategic plan, Vision 2026, educate, inspire, and challenge, and the four strategic objectives. And I also align the goals to the four standards that are part of the Superintendent's rubric. And lastly, I think the work that we're moving forward really demonstrates a commitment to improvement and also our core values of belonging, collaboration, and student-centered leadership. I think the highlights that I'd like to share this evening, so we had a successful launching of the 25-26 school year across all 10 schools. Our work continued around instructional focus, specifically looking at elementary mathematics, continuing the work in literacy at the elementary level, expanding the work in ELA at the middle school level, math focused at the middle school level as well, and also looking at math at the high school and implementing some new resources, while we're also studying PE and health curriculum led by Mary Ellen and Annie McGowan, and also science, we're looking at middle school resources with the work of Kathy Carmine Young. And we've continued the theme of belonging across our 10 schools. And again, if students feel like they belong, have close connections to adults, it does have a positive impact on their experience in our system. So, that has continued to be a theme across the past many years, but a theme we continued this year and something we keep, continue to strive for. We haven't reached the goal of making sure all students feel belong, that they belong, or all faculty and staff feel like they belong, so it's work we strive to do better at. And the other focus really was around management and operations, really thinking about the next generation of schools. So, we've continued the work in Southborough, thinking about what is the next best solution for the fleet of schools in Southborough, specifically around near and aging infrastructure, and how to come to a solution and bring a community to a solution that it can support. So, that has been a work that we've continued, working closely with the SLUCC Board and other boards and committees. Also, looking at the Peaslee, working with the Peaslee Building Committee, hiring an OPM, Becky Belgrino was instrumental in this work, hiring a designer, also Becky was instrumental. And now, we're at the phase, we have our designer, we have our OPM, and we're really talking about the educational plan that we're hoping to set forth in Northborough. So, that project is, is moving forward. Another major piece in terms of operation, so we have two principals in Southborough that are retiring at the end of this year. So, principals play a critical role in kind of the culture and academic growth of a school. So, these are really important hires. So, we've launched that search process. We're trying to engage as many stakeholders. We're meeting with faculty and staff, and we're in the process of forming two committees. So, that is work that we are undertaking as we speak. And then, we continue to work on family and community engagement, trying to develop opportunities for students to engage in our schools, whether it's through events, or coffees, or school plays, or experiences. This has been a focus, and it will continue to be a focus as we think about reauthorizing our strategic plan, which we're calling Vision 2032. Professional culture, so we convened and supported leadership teams in the 25-26 action plan, so that is kind of the anchor of our actions that we're taking to achieve the goals that we've set. So, we use our principal meetings, our NASA leadership meetings to really coalesce around those ideas and move the work forward. And Dr. Ryan Horn has been instrumental in helping us move the work forward. And then, just a couple of major district initiatives. So, we, we have launched the strategic plan reauthorization. So, we have community forums, we'll be meeting with PTOs, surveying families, meeting with faculty and staff to really hear where we are in terms of progress towards Vision 2026, what does the next level of work look like, and how can we continue the work of, you know, making sure our students are prepared for, for the world of work, or college, or career, whatever they decide. And then, also, a major time focus has been around contract negotiations. That's a significant endeavor, so we're negotiating with three Unit A associations. And we have three other, or four other associations that we have to begin with once we wrap up Unit A negotiations. I think we've had success, we're making progress, and I'm pleased where we are in terms of that work. And then, just looking ahead to the second half of the year, I think, excited to share the Vision 2032 with the committee, also supporting principals and educators through evaluation and capacity building. So, thinking about, we have a limited, limited amount of time, how can we use that time effectively to focus our work? That's been a theme that we'll continue to move forward, continuing the process in major cash, capital projects, whether it's roofing projects through MSBA or long-term facilities planning. And then, we're really doing some work around strengthening our systems that support student learning, well-being, and opportunity for equity of experience. I'm really excited when we conclude contract negotiations. I'll be excited when we hire two new principals for our Southborough team. And then, you know, I'm excited to see where the progress that we made towards the actions identified in the 25-26 district action plan. And just again, I'm grateful for the colleagues that I work with day to day to move this work forward. I'm grateful to serve in this position and serve the community, and have always appreciated the school committee's guidance, support, feedback in how we, how we do this work together. And you have to answer.
Thank you, Greg. Are there any comments or questions from committee members? So, I had a question about, I know it says some of the next steps coming up include some of the action items from the audit. Do you have any details to share, what some of those action items look like?
Which, can you tell me exactly?
So, it's not in the strategic objectives, it was just in your memo at the end. It just said.
So, so that is in the spring of last year, in the spring of 2025, we partnered with Mass Insight to do a two-and-a-half-year after-action review of our equity audit. So, as part of that work, they benchmarked progress and also identified next steps. In terms of moving that work forward. So, we have that report and those actions that actually will be incorporated into our strategic plan. But it's really about equity of opportunity, looking at achievement gaps, and making sure that we're laser-focused on students who aren't meeting expectations, looking at subgroups, and really thinking about why, and making sure that we're creating systems and structures for them to achieve at a high level.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Greg, we appreciate the thoroughness of this mid-cycle review, and I think that the format that you're using this year, putting the evidence in sequential order is really helpful. So, thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Bryce, we're going to move on to policy development and distribution. So, we have a lot of first readings this evening. It is quite a bit to go through. I know some of the, of them are health-related, so luckily, Mary Ellen is here in case we have questions for that. So, let's just go in order. So, we're going to start with the Teaching of Controversial Issues, which is a Northborough-Southborough policy, I-120. Greg?
Yeah, and I'll just add that it's a new policy for the Region. The, all three policies are identical. So, this is a recommendation from Mass Association of School Committees to implement such a policy, just to be clear, around how we navigate controversial issues and controversial speakers, so provide some guidelines and definitions for us to use as school leaders to navigate topics that can be really challenging. So, what you see in the packet is the MASC model policy. I don't think there were too many changes from the policy subcommittee meetings that we did have. But we'll turn it back to Lauren and have any comments.
Sure. Yeah, so just, so who serves on the policy subcommittee, just so that we sort of see? Okay, great, thank you. So, hopefully, those members can, is Kristen here?
Yes. I raised my hand way down here.
Oh, perfect. Perfect, thank you. So, those are people who have sort of been working on these policies. So, first of all, any comments about this specific policy, the Teaching about Controversial Issues? We really took MASC's policy, and so this is what's recommended by MASC, so there really weren't any drastic changes. Paul?
So, I mean, how did this come about? Like, were people asking for this, or?
Yeah, I think there have been experiences across the Commonwealth with people bringing in speakers who were controversial, so that was one reason why. And then, also, some controversial conversations were happening across the Commonwealth by teachers that really were not part of the, of the frameworks. So, this just provides some guidelines to make sure that there are goalposts that we kind of stay within. There were no issues here in our district, but the recommendation from MASC is to have a policy before an issue arises.
You said this was a change for Northborough and Southborough, but, but new for the Region?
Yeah, so there was a policy in Northborough and Southborough. This would, this would be a new policy in, at the Region.
I'm just a little concerned about anything that stifles conversation, especially at the high school. Because to me, I mean, things are happening in the news, you want to talk about them in school, in different various classes. And I don't know, I just, I'm concerned that this may give teachers pause in doing that.
Actually, it's funny, I have a bit of a different reaction. There's a part of me that thinks that this will cause some critical evaluation of the topic at hand as it applies to the curriculum, right? If there's a path that is wished to go down, if something arises, if it would take them a week to get it, that would give me the idea that in a week, it's still a very important thing, and they've thought critically about who they may or may not invite to come see it. I guess my, the part that I keep coming to, which is similar, is like, who is deciding controversial?
Well, yeah, and I'm, I'm not, the speaker part, I find, I mean, if you're going to have a speaker come in, yeah, that should be edited and thought about. But I'm thinking more like, you know, something happened in the news, a kid, you know, comments about it in class, or asks a question, so in the moment, the teacher has to decide what to do. And they're not going to go and consult the policy, I don't think. So, I don't know, I just, it strikes me as, as a little stifling. I, you know, I didn't see any need to change the original one, but, you know, if we didn't have one at the high school, then sure, I can see something, but this just seems a little burdensome to me. I ask, I think I thought I heard, so the recommendation of the MASC, in the language we're looking at here, is from them, as they have it?
Correct.
Yeah, I think if I had a reservation, it'd simply be around that controversy. How does someone really know, such that they're really subject to the policy?
Thank you. Kristen?
I was actually just going to clarify, I think I just interpreted it differently than Paul. When we were talking about it in the subcommittee, I think, just based on like the headings where it's, you know, student-initiated forums or classroom planned discussions, I didn't think that a question posed by a student, for example, or comment in the class about a topic would qualify under the policy. I think this, and correct me if I'm wrong, but in my reading, this was really just applying to.
Planned.
Lessons by the teacher. Yeah, planned forums by a student group at the high school who wanted to have a talk, a discussion about whatnot. At, you know, at my school, we had a discussion about the election results, right? I would throw that under this policy. It was a planned forum, and there was discussion and things. But I didn't think that if something sort of happened organically, or a student asked a question about the news, that that would fit under this policy, and definitely correct me if I was misinterpreting.
What's the difference? I mean, if you're talking about it in class, you're talking about it in class, whether it was planned or not.
Yes, I think it talks about how, so if a controversial issue is brought to the table by a student, it's how does the teacher approach that conversation? So, it's helping students to understand different perspectives, making sure they take different points of view. It's not advocating on a specific, taking a position on a, on a topic as an educator. You know, it's, it's not the forum to express their own views on politics, for example, but to have the skills and knowledge to be able to help have a, an important conversation with students about a controversial topic where multiple sides are taken and seen more broadly.
I think we talked a little, there is some vagueness about what is controversial, and it could come up at different times, but the, the first part of this talks about the teacher specifically choosing content related to the objectives and making sure they provide a reasoned argument, and scholarly for both sides, so that, and not advocacy, so not going one way or another. I think the, the other parts are helpful on the high school level of like student-initiated forums or bringing in outside speakers, so there's some, because there was no policy at all at the high school, so there's some oversight and review of, of how that would go and, and checks and balances there. But I think the, the first part just speaks to teachers about being thoughtful about their objectives and presenting all pieces of the topic. I don't think, the way I was interpreting it is not to, to push it aside, but to make sure it's, it's balanced.
To Paul's point, I feel like the, like the instances where teachers might have a question presented by a student, and there's that organic conversation, I almost think that that's sort of skills and professional development that can happen for teachers to learn how to respond in those situations, and then use this policy to then plan a lesson if appropriate. Because I, I think I read this the same way, in a planned lesson, here's how it should work. However, I know that teachers need to be ready for organic conversation. So, I don't know if this policy really talks to that, though. And I don't know if we want it to.
Can you just change the title? That's, I mean, it's a, teaching is, could be anything, right? But if it, if this is geared towards lesson planning, then just change the title, so it's more clear. Because I think it works better in that, in that form, because this is obviously all about, this is mostly about preparation, whereas I think it, if we want to make it clear that it's excluding sort of, referring to this policy, if in the course of conversation, something comes up and it's, you know, there's ramifications from that controversial conversation, then it would be clear that it's not, doesn't fall under this purview.
Thanks, Ellen.
I will share that we did share the policy with the teacher associations, got some good feedback. So, this is a first read, so I think we do, need to do some more work hearing from teacher perspectives about this policy, and if, you know, we're having discussion around the meaning of it, there's probably more clarity that we need to bring. A policy's supposed to serve as a helpful document and tool, so that's something that, you know, we have time to do, we will do.
Any other comments to bring back to subcommittee on this? All right, we're going to move to our next policy, which is I-350. We're gonna move to our next policy, which is I-350. So this is a new policy called the Middle School Pathway Exploration Policy. So it would be in both Northborough and Southborough. This is exciting. Greg?
Yes, so this is a new regulation that came to fruition this past spring. And it requires all districts across the Commonwealth to have a middle school pathway exploration policy. And the primary purpose is to make sure that our middle school students are thinking about career pathways and have opportunities to explore career pathways at the middle school level, and also know what pathways exist when they go from eighth grade to the high school. So as you can see, it talks about being very clear around the high school pathway options that are available in our district. Talks about our kind of our statement of purpose. It really speaks to awareness and collaboration, that we need to be clear in our communications and provide many opportunities for students to explore CTE. It also talks about records and admission maintenance. And then it also talks about a career and academic plan, scope and sequence. So sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, kind of the scope and sequence of the topics that we need to really make sure we're having conversations with kids. In sixth grade, introduction to career and academic, academic plan, self-exploration, talking about strengths, interests, values. In seventh grade, it continues the development of that plan, goal-setting reflection. And then in grade eight, it's an expansion of that plan. And then in our specific district, tours of Asba Valley, Cloudus Technical High School, and doing some high school transition planning. I think this is also really important work in terms of Michelle Kaelin and the work she does. It's not only opportunities at Asba Valley, but it's also opportunities within our system in making sure our kids have plans to explore different career pathways.
Thank you, Greg. Something we discussed in subcommittee also is that a lot of what you see in this policy, or at least some of it, is already being done in our schools. So it's not like we have to suddenly, you know, build the ship, right? So a lot of it already is being done. My question would be, out of sort of what this policy sort of scope is, what would be the biggest lift here for us?
I think really aligning software that we're using at the high school to the middle school around some of the career planning, the interest surveys, so that's work that's being, that's happening now. The high school did shift its platform to a different tool to align with some of these career pathway initiatives. And we're thinking about how do we expand that to the middle school. I think the biggest shift is having plans with kids, and how do we keep track of those plans? And we believe that the tool that we're using at the high school can be a solution at the middle school, and that will also follow students. So when they leave Trotty or Melican, they'll use the same software and have that plan built in when they arrive as ninth graders at the region.
Great. Thank you. Comments or questions? All right, so we will continue to discuss this at subcommittee and bring it back to a second read. Next is our wellness policies. So Mary Ellen, just be ready. So first, we have our school immunization requirements, which is J-120. And so that's a policy for all three of our committees. Actually, Mary Ellen, do you want to come? I feel like it would be worthwhile for you to come on up, if you're willing.
Sure.
Thank you. Maybe if you could sit next to Laura, right there?
And just hot off the press, Mary Ellen is a, has a new grandchild.
Oh, congratulations. Congrats, Mary Ellen. Thanks.
She just keeps adding to her.
Not for none.
Her crew.
So could you give us a little background, Mary Ellen, on the updates for the school immunization requirements and the reasons behind them?
Sure. So the medical advisory team has met and discussed these, all these policies too, along with other people. But you can see the first change in there is where for religious exemptions, the state wording is that the religious exemption should be renewed annually, but the medical advisory team thought we should use the word must. A medical exemption must be renewed annually. And the feeling was that a religious exemption must be renewed annually too. So that's the first change that was done there. And then the next three paragraphs really define what is expected of people when they're with the immunizations requirement, that it's prior to school entry. They will be notified of what the requirements are, and requesting that up-to-date documentation be submitted to the school. If after 30 days, we don't receive that documentation, or proof that an appointment has been made, or an exemption letter, then the guardian or parent will be informed that the district may, the student may be excluded from school until the documentation is received. And then it just defines the next part, it's just about our homeless population can enter the school without these requirements, and we will work with them to get them what they need.
Thank you. Also in subcommittee, we discussed just the partnerships that the Northborough school, Northborough/Southborough and regional school districts have with other partners to try to provide immunizations for students who are either homeless or who are struggling to make their appointments. So that was good to hear during our conversations.
Oh, yes, definitely. So the nurses work with everybody to get them. We have, there's free clinics around. Dr. Medina has offered, has done some vaccines for us. I work with both of the town health departments. And last year, we were able to get some vaccinations through a partnership with the Westborough partnership. But that, this year is not there, so we're looking at other options for this year to get our students. And it's not, in all the time we've, I've been here, we've never excluded anybody. We work with them to get what they need. So if it's a catch-up schedule, they might just need two or three vaccines until a few more months, and then we'll just keep working with them, so. But I think to have that as kind of a little backbone to rely on is always good, because sometimes people won't cooperate with us.
Great, thank you. Questions or comments about this policy to bring back to subcommittee? Roger?
Just a question for Mary Ellen. So you mentioned we have several resources, the Westborough resource is not available. Is that a significant resource, or just another one?
It was another one for us. I mean, the free clinics are harder to get into, but Dr. Medina is always willing to help us. And we talked with some of our other resources through the Health Department of offering vaccine clinics periodically throughout the year, not just for the flu. Right now, we just offer flu, but to offer all of the regular childhood vaccines.
Thanks. Kathleen?
So there are some percentage of kids in every class that are not immunized for either the medical or the religious reasons. What happens if, let's just take measles. What happens if one of them, if there's multiples, and somebody brings measles into the classroom? What happens to the other unvaccinated kids?
The under-vaccinated or unvaccinated would be excluded for up to 21 days.
So they'd have to stay home?
Yes. They would be excluded from school.
And our current vaccination rates are high.
They're very, very high, so.
Oh, I'm sure they are. I'm just, I'm literally asking the question, because I don't know.
Right.
Right, it's not zero, yeah.
Right, so it would, is the exclusion. And when we send the letters out to people, we let them know that, you know, like, if they're not up to date, or they're under-vaccinated or unvaccinated, then this would be the repercussions.
Thank you.
Yes, Paul?
I think the timing could be a little clearer. It sounds like the intent is not to exclude a child from school if they're in the process of getting vaccinated. Is that right?
Correct. So if they have proof of an appointment coming up, even if it's past the 30 days, then we'll just work.
There's a second paragraph you should look at.
Yeah, between the two of them, I mean, the first one, prior to entry, all admission requirements are expected to be fulfilled. That's a must. So it sounds like, maybe it's fine as is, because I was just saying, if the intent is to make sure that nobody who's not vaccinated comes to school, then just needs work, but maybe as is, it's fine.
I think we always have the ones who have a medical or a religious exemption that will be at school, so.
Any other comments on this policy? All right, so we're gonna move on to our wellness policy, which is J-320 for all three districts. Mary Ellen, if you could give us the Cliff Notes version on what has been changed and amended.
Some of this was just semantics. As you can see, some of the, just changing the wordings, remember from the food services vendor, for example, a nutritionist rather than a food services representative, is the first change you can see there. John, I know you brought this up, the first time we had this policy, about how could we prohibit people from sharing food at all the levels? So it's changed to discouraged. We did take that into account when we had this discussion earlier. And just some other words, for punishment, we changed to as a form of discipline, that withholding food or recess or anything should not be used as a form of discipline rather than used as punishment. The pre-K through five, food restrictions were very strict. What we had, and that was really basically that no food was allowed into the schools, that wasn't sent in from home or provided through the school, or bought through the school cafeteria. So after discussion with a lot of groups, a lot of stakeholders, the wording that we chose there was that kind of was a happy meeting place for the nurses, for our parents, our teachers, everybody, that food for the end-of-the-year celebration, there are some titles there, but needs to be approved by the school administrator. I would like that to say the school administrator and the school nurse, not either or, because the school nurse has all of the information on students who have food-related medical concerns. And whatever is that food that is used for end-of-the-year celebrations needs to be purchased through our food services department. So that eliminates, makes sure that it meets all of our guidelines that have to meet for the safe snacks in school, and all of the nutrition guidelines that need to be met. So I think that was the biggest change. The rest were linking the updated comprehensive health and physical education framework rather than the old one, that was 25 years old. Again, instead of punishment, a form of discipline. We added in nicotine products into the tobacco, the use of tobacco vapor products and nicotine products was added in there. Those are prohibited in the school campuses. And then the last, second to last paragraph was that every three, we're, we need to do a triennial review of our wellness policy and our wellness committee. So that would be at least every three years, that the wellness committee would do this review and post it.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Sure. Are we, like, are we commenting on the parts of the policy that aren't edited?
You certainly can. Yeah.
I mean, just the, the physical education part, I mean, at least from the lens of, I guess, what I'm in at the moment, kindergarten through third grade. You know, stating that the goal of 60 minutes of physical activity a day, I think is right. However, just thinking about how we get to that number, it, like, most of the time, right? You have PE twice a week, and so that's 30 minutes, right? Or maybe, maybe a bit longer.
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, yeah.
And then, but then the other days, you, and then the other, so those days, you get over an hour. But then the other days, you really just have recess, which is 30 minutes. I think we had a time at Mary Finn where that actually got truncated a bit, because there was this slow weight balance in lunchtime and recess, which I think got resolved. But I guess my broader point is, is like, oh, we're not really set up to get to that hour, which I think is the right goal, especially at that young age. And so I'm just thinking, like, if that's gonna be in the policy, then maybe what are our steps to kind of make sure that that's happening?
I think that it includes before and after-school programming too, as it states in the policy, that it's not just during the school day. That goal is 60 minutes in a day, from the beginning of the day till the end of the day. We have them for the six hours, but we do provide before and after school.
Extended day and...
Yeah, before and after-school activities too. That would be included in that. I think we don't formally count when the teachers do a go noodle event in their classrooms. Do you know what I mean? They do activities, especially at the younger grades, they do a lot of movement in their classrooms. I think probably as we get older, it gets less than...
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's understandable. And I mean, then you get into the physical activity clubs, intermurals, definitely, you know. But up through fifth grade, I feel like that stuff is limited, at least from a school perspective. And so if we are, if we are counting, I guess, like, I know extended day after, there's time on the playground, and certainly, you know, that, that could count, although obviously not everybody is, participates in extended day. I don't know what before-school, like, physical activity looks like. So, I don't know, it just, it would be good. I think generally, you know, it's just, it would be, and I understand that it is logistically challenging with everything else that needs to happen in a school day, but I think especially at that age, it's, you know, making sure we're balancing the physical education and activity with that is important.
Yeah, I think we could also do a, we could take a few classroom teachers and do a time audit.
Yeah, right. And just know where the date is. Yeah.
And are we close to that hour goal?
Right.
Are we far off?
Yeah.
And then, and then from that data, we can start talking about, okay,
Yeah.
what would it take to get closer to 60 minutes?
There's a number of parents that have expressed, you know, to me, concern about this, and it's obviously pertinent, because it's coming up now. So I think that would be great. And then the, the second thing is just the form of discipline around, like, withholding, I guess, recess, right? I mean, if a student is, for instance, you know, is, is not doing what they shouldn't be doing on the playground, you know, bullying, or hitting, or pushing, right, happens. I mean, typically, right, the, it's, you're gonna make that student either sit down or go inside. So like, that, to me, is...
The way we'd approach it
Yeah.
is that the student would still have research, recess, not research. But it'd be structured differently.
Yes.
So their movement might not be...
So if it was a consistent issue?
Correct. So, so it's not that they would be limited from recess, their activities and what they could, you know, could do.
Different. Okay.
And I think the intent in the policy, and correct me if I'm wrong, is to not threaten, you're gonna lose recess if you don't get in line right now. Right?
Separate from an issue that you're dealing with in the moment?
Yes. I think it's to not take that away, because that kid probably needs to get out of recess.
Hundred percent agree.
Right?
I just want, a hundred percent agree. I just want to make sure that that's, that that is, that we're following that.
I think a lot of people have that, have this mindset, that they need the activity. But there's some people who might think, like, or you didn't do your math work, you had to sit down for 10 minutes of recess to do it. Well, that should not be being...
Yes, agreed, agreed, a hundred percent. I just, you know, I just, yeah, making sure that that, we're adhering to that, I think is, yeah, is important.
I think there's always room for improvement for added activity. You know, we do walk to school, but not very infrequently. Could we increase that before school? I think some schools, when the students get off the bus, they do play outside for the 10 or 15 minutes before school starts. But it depends on when your bus arrives, how much you get.
Sure, yeah.
It's definitely variable.
Yeah.
I think if we averaged, did that, 30 minutes of recess, and then two 45-minute PE classes? And some people have an extra enrichment class where they get PE, so there is...
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Sean?
Where did the 60 minutes come from? Is that like a medical guideline or a state guideline, or I'm just wondering?
Sixty minutes of exercise a day.
And it came from where?
From AAP.
Okay. I didn't know if it was just something at some point, a committee thought was good, or, you know, or if it was research-based or something.
Right, no, it is research-based through...
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments on this policy? All right. We're gonna move on to our athletic concussion policy, so J-340. Looks like it exists for both, for all three schools. Mary Ellen, any background on this?
So this was brought up because we, currently in our policy, we needed to separate them out from, after our discussion, for a high school policy, and then a K-2, K-8, a K-8 policy. So the high school policy... So the high school policy, currently we had impact testing, was mandatory before participation in sports. And there are other forms of baseline screening for concussions that we've been looking into and that they'd like to move to. So that was the reason for the changing there to just baseline screening. And if the one we moved to, if there's a better one that comes along in a few years, we won't have to update this. If we follow the baseline screening and at the recommended intervals of that screening, that it would be done. And I think that's really all that we have changed on this.
Mary Ellen, the only question I have, sorry, is on, there's a, there's a note here where it says, you changed it from every two years to recommend intervals. Is there a reason why you modified that?
Because the recommended interval for the one we're looking at is a year. So the program that we're looking at now is Sway, and that, the recommended interval for that screening is yearly, not every two years. So the students would do it every year.
Keeping it more general?
Correct.
Depending on the tool you're using?
Right. So then if we went back to impact, if next year they said no impact is the best way to go, then that would be every two years, because that's the recommended interval for that screening.
Where is that wording, John? Where does it say that?
There's no pages, I don't really know.
Okay.
Page one of one, regionally.
I see, okay.
So is it possible then, instead of recommended intervals, you can say no less than two years? No greater than two years? I guess my point is, it's now every two years. Recommended intervals could be once every fifty years. That's dramatic, but I guess...
Right, but it would be whatever program we use in the recommended interval.
I appreciate that, but I guess, I guess, I would be surprised if we, I guess, I'd, I'd like to encourage us to not look at a program that potentially has a longer period in between. But that's my only point.
I, I can imagine that we would at this point.
I can't imagine, but since we are taking it out, right now it's every two years. We're saying recommended intervals, and there's just the opportunity to, it's just, it's, it's opening up the policy. I appreciate the fact and agree with you that it's unlikely that anyone will go longer than two years. But I guess I'm just curious if we have any thoughts of that. That's, that's a, that's a thought, you can take it back to committee, or?
We'll bring it back to committee, maybe we'll do some research. Maybe there is a, I don't know, a general consensus in the concussion world that, you know, their protocol will only be every one or two years, right? But we'll, we'll do some research and then bring, bring it back.
I mean, I'm, I'm total proponent of every year, so I guess...
Okay, so every year is your...
Well, I mean, obviously, if the program doesn't allow for that, then it's not gonna be available, but...
I mean, I think you could put in the word, you know, no more than two years after that.
Or you could do that recommended intervals of the program selected. So then it's this way testing and the program recommends every year.
What John's saying is if the new athletic director comes in and says, we could go to this training that's every ten years is the recommended interval.
I don't think there's any impact testing that's recommended or baseline testing.
That's right.
Hey, I mean, just the thought that I think, geez, is after you do the interval, if you introduce the idea of a program, common sense of which should not exceed two years, which, which such program should not exceed two years, that, that policy then would give the athletic director the direction not to choose such program if the community agrees.
Great, thank you. I have that wording written down. Chelsea?
Carol, did we determine if the testing or the training is applicable to middle school?
So it is down to, yes. So the age that it is applicable for, that you could use the Sway testing for, is to a younger age. But at this point, we don't have the capacity of someone to do that. We don't have athletic trainers at the middle school. When we look at our numbers of concussions, diagnosed concussions, they're definitely much higher at the high school than at the middle school. I think that if we needed to do any screening, we would be able to, you know, utilize it on a one-off, like a follow-up screening and things like that. But at this point in time, we don't have the capacity to have it at the middle school.
So are, do you think, so now that some of the athletic programs at the middle schools are under the high school purview, are we missing anything in the Northborough, Southborough policies?
I don't think so. I think when we look at the high contact sports and high-impact sports, which is like football, rugby, I mean, soccer is considered, and I think there is soccer at the middle schools. But it really isn't on the list. You know, we would all think of it as a high-impact sport, but I don't think it's on the, the list. But I think it's something where we can grow, for sure.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. And then next is our competency determination policy, J four hundred, which will be applicable to the region, since MCAS is no longer a graduation requirement.
Sure, so, so as regional committee members are aware, Principal Bevan and the leadership team have been working on developing a competency determination policy, which is required. It actually is due to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education by the end of December. So Sean has been working with department chairs, the leadership team, to articulate the policy. There has been state guidance and model policies that this has used in order to create this policy. And it really speaks to, with the vote to eliminate the graduation requirement of MCAS, this is in its place. So this now sets the expectations for graduation requirements. I do anticipate that this will change again. As many of you probably have heard, the governor did, has proposed new graduation requirements, different assessments for students to, to meet the standard. So I think in the next probably two years, we'll see a change to this particular policy.
Questions, comments?
I have a question. As part of the document, it says, to show mastery, a student must successfully complete in accordance with the district's grading policy or by any other appropriate methodology as may be determined by the school committee. And then it lists three, three items. It says, the final assessment for a course, a capstone portfolio or project, or an equivalent measure identified in the district's competency determination policy. I guess my question, it's really a question, is should we be looking at what the final assessment is for the class? Or should we be looking at what the student's overall grade is at the class, at the end of their completion of the class?
So the policy's pretty prescriptive, and it is actually the final assessment for the course.
You mean the state guidance is prescriptive?
So the state guidance essentially says it doesn't matter what you did the entire year, it's what you do on the final exam?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hence why we have a capstone for portfolio project.
There is an appeals process, though, is right.
Yes.
And would the equivalent measure identified in the district's CD policy, would that be inclusive of students in alternative programs?
Correct, so we work closely with Sully, Director of Multilingual Learners, and also Helene Desjardins and Kate Clark around students who receive special education services. So a lot of thought went into making sure that we're supporting all learners in terms of getting a competency determination.
Great, thank you. Anything else, especially from our regional members? All right, thank you so much. All right, let me get back to... So those were all first readings, so we'll be bringing those back at our next combined meeting. Next, we're gonna go over our legal counsel contract renewal. Greg?
One of the important responsibilities the school committees have is to appoint and contract a legal counsel to represent the district. So as part of its governance and oversight role, it really ensures that the district has access to high-quality, reliable legal guidance across a broad range of topics and educational matters. So as you know, we have contracted with Khan and Smagula LLP. We've had them on retainer for the last couple of years. They have provided, from my perspective, excellent counsel and guidance. Because they are on a retainer, it also gives us the ability to access, the council principals have access, all directors, the school committee, and they are at our beck and call. So we speak to them almost daily on a variety of topics across our ten schools. They, they have been great partners and have been pleased with our counsel and would recommend continuing employing them as the district's legal counsel.
Questions or comments? Oh, yes, Kristen?
Just a general question. Why, for my own indication, does the district have its own, rather than using like the town council, like town or Northborough has its own council, for example? Why does like the K three not fit under there and then Southborough is under Southborough and that sort of thing?
Yeah, so it's a very different type of counseling that we need than, than general town council. So they are experts in, for example, special education law, labor relations from a school perspective, disciplinary cases and case law on discipline, bullying, those types of, of general counsel.
Yeah, they are very different specialties, interestingly.
Yes, and I think it's a very fair price for the amount of access that Greg says he has and the principals have, et cetera. It's a great price a month.
So, yes?
Price, so we, so we've used them for another year, satisfied with the service. Are we not responsible for going out and doing some type of bid process on a, on some free basis?
So this is one of those areas that's exempt. Becky in the audience to clarify, to confirm. Thank you, she's my counsel.
Are we, are we happy with the thirty-eight hours?
Yeah, I mean, they give, sometimes they give less than a week, sometimes they give more. But I, I will show, no matter what topic or issue and the amount of time that it takes to address the issue, they've been there. So there are times when they've far exceeded thirty-eight hours. And again, they're, they're all in and are available to us.
So I am looking for a motion to approve the renewal of the legal counsel contract. Thank you. So Denise for Southborough?
Second.
Great.
Okay, all in favor? Five zero for Southborough.
Great, thank you. Northborough?
So moved.
Second. Great, and we have to do a roll call vote. So Joan?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Myself is a yes, so that is approved for zero.
Second.
Joan? We'll go slow so that judge can get notes over here. I did it last time, it's a lot. Okay, next we're gonna do the region.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
So that's Chris Cavino and Sean O'Shea. I gave it, oh, sorry, I gave it to Sean.
Chris and Chris.
Chris and Chris. Wait, so, okay, second. All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, that's right, yeah, I got it. Paul?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Chris?
Me?
Cavino?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Oh, no, Kathleen Allen is not here, Kathleen Pletchko, yes. Chris?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And me, that's a yes, and passes unanimously. Great. Do we need to, I guess, let's do the union just in case. So I'll make the motion for the union, looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you. This can just be hands, all in favor? Two, three, Allen? Yep, okay, great. And it passes unanimously, Kelly is not here. Thank you. All right, let me just get my agenda. Great, so now we're gonna move on to the draft twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-seven school calendar. We have heard from members of our community this evening, as well as in conversations throughout the school year. So looking to Superintendent Martineau to sort of guide us in this conversation with our draft calendars this evening.
Sure, so another important responsibility of the school committee is to approve the upcoming school calendar. So one of the responsibilities is really thinking about how the hundred and eighty-five days need to fit within the, the school year. So the earliest that school can start is on Monday before Labor Day, and that is per, per collective bargaining. And the last day needs to be at the end of June. So that's kind of the framework in which we're placing a hundred and eighty days. And then the school committee has a lot of, a lot of discretion of how those hundred and eighty days are placed. I think there's often, we're trying to make sure that we have a focus on instructional continuity. We think about PD placement and, and the last day of school. I think that when we get more towards the end of the school year, it can be more challenging. So when you're, when you're looking at June twenty-first or later, it becomes really difficult to fit any unforeseen days off that weren't anticipated. So what I have provided the committee are four calendars. All four calendars include the religious observances of Yom Kippur, Eid, and Good Friday. So those are the three, the calendar, three religious observances in the calendar next year. And of the four calendars, option one really is a mirror of this year's calendar, and the end date is June twenty, twenty-first, twenty twenty-seven. I think that is too late to end the school year. That would give us approximately six or seven days before the end of the, end of June if it happened to be a difficult year in terms of cancellations. The other two options, or the other three options, option two, one could work for Northborough and Southborough because we could start earlier in August. Only the region has the clause that earliest that a school could start is the Monday before Labor Day, unless we have a mutually agreed-upon calendar with ARDA. Option three really bounces, I think, the end of the school year, which is June seventeenth. We have a September, September start. It does place professional learning days on Yom Kippur and Eid and does not include, calendar four includes a day on September fourth. And on the calendar four, it's a day off. And then the last calendar is a, is a calendar that was developed with ARDA, with the Algonquin Regional Teachers Association. The end of the, end of the school year is June seventeenth. It would, we would agree to start on August twenty-sixth, which is a Thursday, and twenty-seventh, which is a Friday. We would have another PD day on Monday. And Friday, September fourth, would be a day off extending Labor Day weekend. And then there would be a PD day on Eid. And the thinking is that we'd rotate observances for PD days in future years. So next year, it might be a different religious observance. It might be Good Friday, it might be Yom Kippur, it might be Diwali, depending on where, where the dates fall. In my recommendation, you know, I support either calendar three or four. I think it, it strikes a balance. I think June seventeenth is actually a good time for the last day of school year. You know, as, as one of the speakers shared, you know, using PD days on some of those observance days allows for, we don't have to take other days off for professional development. And I think that options three and four strike the best balance.
Thank you, Greg, thank you. So we're gonna open it up to conversation, comments, and thoughts. And then after that, we can move on to whoever would like to make a motion. I'm just gonna ask that we're mindful about what's already been said. I know that we've had this conversation many times, but it is our job to have this conversation every year. So any comments or thoughts?
First of all, I'd like to say that I appreciate the clear thoughtfulness that has gone into...
First of all, I'd like to say that I appreciate the clear thoughtfulness that has gone into generating these options, and I appreciate Greg's recommendation. I'm, I'm still of the same mindset that I was last year, which is I, I believe we are a public school, I believe we are a secular organization. And I, I really don't support any calendar that has any religious holidays in it for, not because I don't think that they have value, but because I think that it does open the door to being selective of which holidays we are choosing as a committee to basically prefer over one or another. So that's, that's just kind of my personal position on this.
Thank you. Kristin?
Good question, actually. So I'm wondering if there was any teacher feedback about calendar number three or four moving those PD days to other places? And the calendar was, I think, at least in recent history, they've all sort of been at the beginning. Was there, I don't know, anything that the council's feedback?
Yeah, so I did share the draft calendars with association presidents. I think they did receive some feedback. One of the pieces of feedback is teachers have really appreciated three days at the beginning, start of the school year. There's a lot to prepare for, there's a lot of learning that needs to take place before the start of the school year. Calendar three places that third PD day early in September. So that was trying, trying to balance out, really providing time for principals and teachers to move through some of the learning that needs to take place. So that was one piece of feedback. The other piece of feedback that we received was that having a professional development day on a religious observance prohibited some of our teachers from participating in professional learning, which is one of the disadvantages of calendar, of the calendar three and four. But I think it's trying to strike the balance. There is a clause in all three contracts where teachers can take religious observance days. And we would try to mitigate some of the impacts by rotating through the days over a period of time. So next year, again, people of a certain faith who might be impacted having a PD day on that day wouldn't be impacted the next year.
Thank you. Paul?
Can I ask a question about that? So in addition to just having to go to PD or having to PD on which holiday, I mean, I guess my concern is also that they're missing PD. So are they, are those rotated so that if they, if they can't catch it one day, they can catch it another time?
Yeah, so that's something we're talking about, that, you know, if people are taking a religious observance and they're missing a PD day, how do we ensure that they're getting the content?
So there's no guarantee if it's offered on one day, it's gonna be offered again some other time?
I mean, it, no, there's no guarantee. Again, we're trying to be mindful. I mean, I, I would say on any professional development day, there are teachers who miss professional development.
So Greg, were you saying that option two is not viable for the region, is that correct?
Correct, because it's not mutually agreed upon.
Option, option four, having the Friday, the September fourth off, eh, why is that day added?
So the part of it was kind of the cadence, the start of the school year, having three days on with kids.
Yeah.
And then the next week's four, and then a week. Also, you know, many districts now are, have that Friday off.
Yeah.
Surrounding area.
Yeah.
So many of our teachers have kids, and that was kind of a logistics piece to them.
Okay, it wasn't like a trade-off. I was, I was looking to see if there was a trade-off somewhere, I was, okay.
Any further discussion? See some furrowed brows, these people are.
We've had this discussion for many years and, and quite in-depth. And, you know, as educator in systems that have not, that do not have any religious holidays on it, I've experienced that. And also kids missing. Also being on this committee for, this is my seventh year now, we, the, the communities have really committed to inclusion. And there have been a lot of steps to, Greg talked about the, the revisiting of the equity report. So we've spent a lot, a lot of time about making sure families and students feel a part of the community, which is important. And, and lastly, I would, I would just say, as I'm weighing all this, we, when we talked about this last year, I think we talked about a, a, a three-year run of running the calendar in this, in this method so we could establish some type of consistency and baseline and, and revisit it over a period of time. And so we're not yo-yoing every year. And so, so, I mean, just, I would support the recommendation of option three.
Is that a motion?
I move to approve option, calendar option three.
We have a motion by Sean on the region.
I'll second the region.
We have a second by Paul on the region. So we're gonna take a vote for the region first.
Roll call.
It has to be roll call, thank you. Paul?
Yes.
Chris?
No.
Kathleen?
No.
Sean?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Joan?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes, yes.
And, yeah, I'm thinking, yes, for me. Sorry, could the abstains just raise their hands so I can make sure? I mean, the no votes.
Two no's.
Thank you. All right, so that motion does pass by the region, so I'm looking for a motion from Northborough. I'll move for Northborough.
Second.
All right, any discussion, Northborough?
This is for option three?
Yes.
So we're gonna vote for a calendar where we're gonna create a situation where professional development are falling on days that we're saying students shouldn't be present for. That's what we're voting for.
Right, well, that's what we're voting on now, is option three has.
That's the calendar three, everybody's clear on that?
Yep, has one day, option, calendar three has one professional day that is on our religious observance.
Twenty-first and the tenth for option three. September and the tenth of March for option three.
Yep, yep, and the idea is that that would be rotated so that the.
But it's not rotated, that's both of them.
No, I mean the next year.
Into what, into what others?
The other two religious holidays.
Greg's got a question, he's saying they would rotate so that if you missed it the first year, then it would be Good Friday.
Who is missing it, who is missing it this year? So next year it would be held on Good Friday?
And something else, like Diwali.
I mean, yeah, there's a motion and a second, will we vote?
And then we're discussing which we can discuss.
So it'd be Diwali, so the option playing it for would be Diwali and Lunar New Year next year.
Okay.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Just for clarity, also, option four, which the two recommended ones were three and four, option four has the same thing.
Only on one of the observances.
So we're talking about doing it on two of them, or we split up? Our other option here is that K three is different than high school.
Yeah, I think for me, I'm with Chris here in that like I didn't join the school committee to be a person who decides a hierarchy of individual faith beliefs. And so like I'm gonna be a no on either of these. And I just really need to flag some of the contradiction that's happening in this moment, right now, with the approval of this calendar. So I'm gonna be a no, there's a vote that can be cast and I can be overridden.
Do you wanna run the vote?
Sure, we'll do, we're doing yeses and nos. Lauren?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kristin?
No.
Bryce?
No.
All right, so when we have our full committee back, we'll have to revote. So we'll take the vote at our January meeting, or we will schedule a special meeting for when Kelly can join. All right, or we can make another motion for Northborough at some point later this evening. But let's move on to Southborough.
So I'll move that Southborough approve option three, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Please go ahead.
I mean, I would just simply say I prefer four. For, mostly because of simpler in terms of the one professional development day that we have to rotate. And, eh, yeah, and then I think that I, I don't see an issue with the extra sort of holiday day extension to, to Labor Day. I think, I, either, either of those calendars I would, either three or four I'm in favor of. I don't see it necessarily as us classifying certain holidays as more important than others. I think that in order to be inclusive, it is not like a, this is, I don't think we're claiming that this is the answer. I think we're taking steps to be inclusive of the community. We may be wrong about this, I think it takes time to evaluate that. And so I think three or four would, I'd be supportive of.
Roger?
Is there a, a practical issue here related to, and it may not be true in comparing all the calendars, but from the standpoint of regarding the family, you know, situations on which holidays their kids have or which days their kids, you know, are in school, do we, is it important to be consistent with all of the, all of the, I guess I'll call it the districts, okay? So that, so if, if we don't support the one that has been voted for so far, which is three, that's okay? Or does this throw us back into some kind of a, you know, another vote, all right? So it's a process question, along with, as I say, it may not, maybe one or two of these calendars are close enough so it's not gonna make a difference to families, but it seems like, it seems like having the same calendar for all three districts would seem to be supportive of, of, of families in the region because, and I say region to, you know, to mean all three districts, not the high school. Because, you know, you, you're gonna have children, students, in the different districts.
Yeah, so is it impossible to have three distinct calendars? No.
Did you say it is possible?
Is it impossible?
Okay, fair enough.
Is it logistically challenging? We share transportation, we share food services. There's a lot of, of commonality that exists across the calendars in terms of an operational perspective. So I, I prefer to have a calendar for the Northborough Public Schools, the Southborough Public Schools, and the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Districts.
One more question?
Yep.
So, and this is related to the kind of discussion we had that, Sean, did, did you just mention, or we, we talked about having a three years? Who, who, who mentioned, who reminded us, right, it was Sean, that when we talked about this last year, we, we identified that it's, we wanna give this time to, to work or not before we throw it out, if you will, I mean, we, or keep it. Do people still feel that we need three years? I'm just curious, it's more of a, or is two years enough? So that if, if we, people move forward on this and they're not necessarily a hundred percent in their own mind that it's the right thing to do, can they look forward to the fact that we'll review this next year, recognizing that, you know, we've had, we've had enough time to see if it's going to work or not?
So someone who's more clear on Robert's rules, can we open this discussion up to everyone right now, or does it have to stay in Southborough? I'm unclear.
That was my question.
Okay. I think, I think the discussion has to stay in Southborough right now.
Okay, so. So, all right, so what, what do, what do people in Southborough think about that? Because we're, we're really the only ones that matter right now.
As, as it should. They wasted their opportunity. I, I, I think, I mean, you know, I think three feels better, you know, I guess to me, I don't know, than.
Well, it's already on the table, right?
But I mean, just like, you know, I, and I don't have like.
You mean, three years feels better, or?
Oh, three years.
Oh, sorry, three years.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Three years, yeah, sorry, I answered your question, Roger. Three years feels better to me, but I just, that's kind of qualitative versus quantitative. But I mean, you know, the first year people are gonna have issues with it, the second year, you know, people are gonna, are also going to sort of still feel like that is new and different and therefore are gonna have issues with it. And then the third year, you sort of are starting to settle in. And if you still feel strongly about that, then that may be a good indicator that we may wanna adjust, you know, I, but again, could you feel like that in second year? Maybe. I don't know.
Go ahead.
I would never wanna see different ca, different calendars in the district between the high school and the elementary because parents have to deal with kids at both levels. And I think it would be very unfair to have different, a different schedule at the high school and a different schedule in Southborough.
Laura?
Yeah, I would say that as well, and I kind of, I agree with Allen in that I probably would have opted for calendar number four between the two. However, in the interest of keeping that consistency with all the districts, I, you know, have three children that will at some point be within various schools, including the region, potentially. So, yeah, that's sort of my stance there, just in terms of, you know, wanting to align best with, you know, ideally have all, all the same things.
And I actually voted against the calendar last year. I'm, I'm still, I, I agree with Chris that I don't think school committees should be choosing which ones, which holidays we observe and which ones we don't. I continue to hear from members of our, of our community who are not represented in this current year's calendar. However, I do think that this, this option three does give it a little bit more balance than what we do have this year. So I do appreciate the fact that Greg put together some options for us that kind of thought outside the box. So I, I would be in favor of this this evening. Are you, are you guys ready to, are you, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the last thing I'd say is like through the lens of, I guess if we're gonna do this, if we're gonna commit to this three years, like, and through the lens of the student experience, is, is like, do, do we feel like this is creating a better experience for students, right? There's no question that it is logistically more challenging than if we had less holidays, right? For, for families that have two working parents, the cost is probably higher for families to deal with, that, I think that's certainly true. Personally, I feel like that, you know, that is, there is a cost to being inclusive. And, you know, as a parent, yeah, it's, it is a pain to sort of deal with some of these days. But then as, you know, a, a school committee member and a member of the community, is that a cost that I'm willing to pay? For me personally, yes, but obviously everybody's situation is different. However, like if we're going to go back at the end of three years and say, look, the students' experiences suffered, the, the, you know, breaking up these weeks in the first half of the school is having a negative impact on learning if measured by these sort of data points, then I think that that helps support one way or the other whether or not we should be doing this or not. Because then, because I'm, again, like the purview of school committee, right, is the student experience. And so if we, if we can argue that this is better or worse for the students, then I think it is within the purview of the school committee to think about what holidays should be on, whether they're secular or religious.
I think my issue is we're picking which ones are and which ones aren't. That's, that's what I'm struggling with.
But that can be adjusted over time, right?
But then you're, you're never gonna get out of school.
You're never gonna get, right, but you're never gonna be right, right? No, I don't, I'm not saying that we should add them, I just, you know, we can be reflective of our community, you know, we don't have, if certain holiday.
But what I'm saying is people in our community are upset that they're not represented in the calendars.
Absolutely.
And, and I think that's what we're challenged with, is we are picking ones over others.
Yeah.
And, and you're, you're never gonna be able to make everybody happy. I think that's, that's where I'm coming from.
I think less, you could make less people unhappy, but. I think less, you could make less people unhappy by, you know. I agree, I mean, I, I definitely, you're definitely right, Chelsea. I just think that, you know, but I think that doing a bit better is better than just sort of saying like, we shouldn't do anything. I, I understand where that perspective of coming from. And I, I think that it's a perfectly valid position to come from. It's just, yeah, I just disagree.
For the record, there have been, I'm not sure anyone has pointed this out, but there have been numerous emails that have been sent in to the school committee. It usually goes to the chairs, but they always get distributed to every single school committee member. So I think we want to ensure the community that we've read every one of those emails. And frankly, it's, they've been well thought out, compelling in a number of instances. I'll probably just say that if I see exactly the same language in, in two emails down to the last letter, it feels more like a petition than an email. Nonetheless, there have been a lot of very good communications that have come to the school committees. And we look at them all and, and we consider those when we, at least I do. I consider those when, when they have a vote like this. So just, just saying.
Laura?
I'll add too, just in terms of, like, again, speaking to what Alan mentioned about how do we look back and see whether or not this was, you know, the right path forward? What, I guess this could be a question for you, Greg, is what are, and I'm sorry if this has come up previously, but the measures to, like, how are we measuring this at the end of, you know, I guess, you know, three years or what have you, to determine whether or not this was, you know, the right path to take at this time? I guess that'd just be a general, just thought question. Because, yeah.
You want me to answer now? I mean, I think that, a couple of thoughts. There's no such thing as a perfect calendar. And that I think the attempt was never to be perfectly equitable. Like, like that's not, that is not something we can achieve with the time constraints we have, over 180 days, squeezing these dates. So the, the study group definitely didn't think that this was the solution that solved all. And it didn't think that some people were still left out. So I think that's important. I think how do we, how do we measure? How do we measure is challenging? It's, you know, it's, do we use disruption to families and their schedules? Do we use more, you know, more marginalized, you know, less observed religions in our community as a metric? Do they feel like they belong, or do, do we use the majority, like the majority of faiths in our community? So I think it's really challenging. I don't think there's a right answer. I think we still would be having a very difficult conversation if we had no observances in the calendar and only the federal holidays. So I think, I think this is, I think I, where I agree is I think giving it some time, I don't necessarily think maybe three years, but two years. You know, and then it can be reassessed. You know, I, I don't think you can make decisions for future committees, right? You really can't make a decision for a committee that might look very different next year. But I do think having, you know, trying this for two years is a good faith effort. No pun intended.
All right, Chelsea, you ready to run the vote?
You guys ready? All right, all in favor?
Roll call or not?
Sorry, no, we're all here.
Of calendar three?
Sorry, of calendar three.
Oh, okay.
All in favor? All opposed? Four one.
All right, and I don't think that we need the superintendency union on this.
Joan raised her hand.
Oh, Joan, yes?
Thank you. I have just a general question. Greg, on a K-8 level, do we have any programs that are shared? Anything that we would be special at or anything where a Northborough student would be going over to a preschool program or something in Southborough if Northborough and Southborough had two different calendars? And if we do have something that is shared, I see something coming up where a parent in Northborough has a child and goes to Southborough. At the day, is it where the child goes to Southborough for school, a special program or is it what they were said? I fully have to think about.
So we do, we do have a few examples where students attend Southborough programs because that's where the program sits. And examples where Southborough students attend Northborough programs. But it's, it's a very small number of students who that would be in fight for.
Thank you, Joan.
Okay, I have to say back something to consider at the K-8 level on the two different calendars. Thank you.
Thank you. So Joan, Northborough will come up with a date soon where we can all meet, hopefully in a special meeting. Matt?
My question, given we have two votes in favor of the calendar and then one that's pending, on the possibility that it doesn't pass in the shared perspective, I think we all want the same calendar. Like, we're not locked into these votes, or are we?
We can re-vote at any time.
Thank you.
Yep, Kristen?
I just wanted, I guess, to clarify a little bit in that, you know, I know next year is very tricky, and I really appreciate your and everybody's work trying to put these four options together and trying to think creatively and not being too late and bouncing and whatnot. I think my, my no vote was more that I feel like we need more discussion about it next year. There are things that I like and don't like about each. And again, I know it's very difficult because Labor Day is so late and certain contracts versus others and whatnot. And so feedback from the community that I got was not in favor of starting later and that. So it was more, I feel like we need to discuss more and try and figure out what may work better or doesn't work. But I really appreciate all of your hard work getting four options together and working around what's, I think is a difficult circumstance. Because next year, Labor Day is as late as it possibly can be, which is made it even more challenging.
Thank you.
I just have one, one final.
Sure.
Curiosity too is piqued here around what feels like, forgive me, upon sacred time slots of the week from Christmas, the week in February, the week in April. Those are not contractual obligations. Those are normative behaviors over long generations of time. But those are not locked in either.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have a personnel update.
Yes, so in, in your package is the personnel, we did hire a clinical resource nurse for the Northborough, Southborough Public Schools. Started on January, September 29th.
Great, thank you. So we have three sets of minutes in our packet this evening. So I'm looking for a motion to approve, accept, approve or accept? Approve and release the executive session minutes as of June 16th, 2025, as well as to approve the combined open meeting minutes of September 17th, 2025, and the combined open meeting minutes of September 24th, 2025. Sorry, I have a question. You said release or retain? Release.
I have a specific comment on the executive session minutes.
Sure.
Due to the nature of the content of those minutes, I would ask that they be retained and not released.
I think it's typical that, our June executive session around this time, the following year, we typically release them. Can you elaborate anymore, or do you feel like you can't?
Not without going into executive session.
Yeah, I would just, I think.
There's, there's, there's something very specific in there?
Yes, so there's no, no sense of urgency if they're not approved and released tonight at a subsequent meeting next episode.
Okay, so I'm going to amend my recommended motion that those executive session minutes of June 16th, 2025 are approved and retained. So that's the only amendment to that recommended motion. So now from Northborough, I'm looking for, so moved.
So moved.
Sorry, great.
Roll call vote, Lauren?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, thank you.
Great, thank you, Chelsea.
So moved from Southborough, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Five out, thank you.
Region?
Alan can take a motion for the region.
So moved.
And second. And this is a roll call, right? Paul?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. It's approved unanimously.
Great, thank you, and I guess we'll do the union too, just in case. So I'll make the motion for the union. Looking for a second. So Bryce, Laura, Chelsea, Alan.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, just make a note that Chelsea stepped out, so did not vote. All right, we're going to move on to our communications.
Sure, so in your packet I did include the school committee update from Assabit Valley Collaborative. So just a reminder that all three districts are a member of DDC. And they provide a number of services to us as districts. Their school programs, they have an evolution program, which is a transition program for students 18 to 22, to adulthood. They have a specialized middle and high school, which is a therapeutic program. They have a reach program and which really supports, you know, K through 12, multiple, students with multiple disabilities and complex health needs. They also provide us with services around expertise, professional learning, rentals, cooperative purchasing. And also we do receive support from FSP, which is Family Wraparound Services. We receive physical, occupational, vision, speech, and music therapies. And lastly, transportation. So I serve, I represent the committees on the board of directors. I attend monthly meetings. And this is one of four reports that you'll receive this year.
Thank you. Any questions about that report? All right, we're going to move to public comments. Anyone in the audience who would like to comment? Yes.
Lauren, do you want me to? Thank you. Mitch Cohen, Phil Witten Street again. Want to thank the committee for its discussion on the school calendar issue. Obviously, thank the, the region and Southborough for their strong support of option three. I might prefer option three as my favorite of all of the four options, but I think it's, it's a balance. And it's a hard decision to make. I think it is a little bit challenging that Northborough, given the fact that I live in Northborough, I'm a little upset that Northborough couldn't, couldn't agree to that. I know I'm going to point that person up personal, but you, you voted in support of the calendar for the current school year. I couldn't, first of all, it's hard to hear in the back. So that's a comment that I've made before as at a speaker at some point. So those who are here listening and could provide comments can do that. The I didn't, it didn't sound like you were opposed to option three or option four. I don't know if you have a preference.
Is there a point of order here?
It's, it's, I, I think that it's valid as long as it's accordial.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not challenging, I'm making this suggestion, which is to think about if there are one of those options that you would support, maybe make a motion, it's still on the agenda, make a motion to have that entertained and then, and then see. It certainly sounded like, for example, obviously option three had strong support. It sounded like option four had pretty good support among the other two committees. I don't know whether that's something that you'd be in favor of. It's a, it puts obviously Greg in a, in a situation, it puts the residents of Northborough in a situation, and potentially the rest of the committees in a situation of not having one of the committees approve a calendar that's in parallel with the other one. It sounded like you wanted some discussion on some, some additional things.
So Mr. Cohen, I'm just going to ask that you generalize your comments to just everyone instead of just one member. Thank you.
My apologies, and my apologies, Kristen. But, you know, to the Northborough committee, try to get this done. And then where there is discussion to be had, have that discussion at a, at a later date in advance of the next year's school calendar. That's my request. Separate from that, but incidentally related, the town of Northborough is now going to be having its fifth annual menorah lighting for Hanukkah. Everyone is invited. It's the 20th of December at 6:00 PM, it's a Saturday night. It's a, it's a fun event if anyone, including Southborough members, nothing against the Southborough members if you want to cross the border into Northborough, want to come, I'll be, I run that event. I'll be happy to, to ask anyone, you know, from any of the committees to, to light a candle, which is a fun thing to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, that was my point of order, was to make this a general comment as opposed to being selective about any school committee member. I think, I think, I think people can pick on the superintendent, but not any of the school committee members individually, so.
Thank you, yes, and school committee members cannot respond to any comments. So I just wanted to sort of reiterate that because it's not a back and forth conversation. Any other participants for public comment? All right, anyone else from the committee? All right, I think you all this evening. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn from Northborough. All right, so moved. Oh, wait, we're not adjourning, sorry.
Yeah, we're, we're still here.
We're in recess.
So are you going to adjourn the combined?
Yes, but. So I moved, moved that Southborough adjourned at 7:17. Is there a second?
Second.
By Alan, all in favor? Five out, thank you.
Region?
Moved to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, you still have you, you still have the superintendent.
Just after your roll call.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, it's very difficult to do.
It is.
Paul?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And myself a yes at 7:17.
And the union. So moved for the union?
Second.
Great, Alan is the second. Bryce?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Myself is a yes, and we adjourned at 7:18.
Do I need a motion to move into recess for Northborough K through eight?
I don't know. What do you guys usually do? Yeah, okay. So, so moved for Northborough to move into recess?
Lauren?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, thank you. Adjourns to recess at 7:00. Adjourns are recessed at seven eighteen.
The Northborough K through eight school committee on Wednesday, December third at seven thirty-three P M. We have myself and Kristen present with Joan remote, so we do have a quorum this evening if there are any votes. It is possible that Lauren may join us in a little bit, but she's got a little one that she's caring for, so we'll see. First up is audience sharing. Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. We've got principals reports with Ms. Callahan. Welcome, welcome.
I don't know where to sit.
You have an option.
You have a lot of options.
It's lonely over here. It's lonely over here. There we go. How's everyone doing?
Good.
Great. All right. We're ready to get going. We'll start with Lincoln Street Schools. And the first picture in the upper left, we continue to collaborate with other schools. That first picture is a student coming over from Melican and they have a seminar class that is led by two of their E L A teachers, Mrs. Peav and Mrs. Angelo. They bring students over on Wednesdays and they work into four of our different classes. One group goes to kindergarten, one goes to first grade, and two go to the two respective second grade classrooms. So that's just a student working on S T math and a middle schooler working with him. So the collaborations have been wonderful. The Gobble Wobble twenty twenty-five was a great success. Typically, we call it the fun run, but this year we upped the ante. We had ten staff members and two P G O members volunteer to run in our first ever inflatable race. That was a surprise for students. They did not know that was happening. We surpassed our fundraising mark and we figured this would be a nice surprise for our students. The other thing is for the first time, we invited families to come and attend the Gobble Wobble, so they got to see their kids in action as they were active around the building. And then on November seventh, we had our annual Veterans Day assembly with the card post came, led the assembly. That again was a student-led assembly. It was wonderful. The kids sang all their songs. It was well-attended and it's just a great tradition. Here we have Peaslee School down the bottom. We have November, their first grade are sharing poems and different things that they're thankful for. They did that together in their community meeting time. The middle picture is around Kindness Week celebration, which was filled with random acts of kindness, positive messages, and they had a Northborough food drive. And then the last picture over to the right is the fifth grade student council. They have created a suggestion box to really empower the students there around things that they want to see happen or change in their school. Proctor Penguins, the bottom left is the Proctor staff and students are getting ready for the Harvard instructional rounds. The top middle picture, again Proctor School, their spirit squad also had a food drive during Kindness Week. And then the bottom right corner, we have the fifth graders and their Penguin huddle that they have. It was around November that they talked about and made crafts having to do with Veterans Day. And Z School to the left, they had a nice culminating activity. They went to the New England Aquarium after their Witten Wisdom lesson and module learning about the sea. The middle picture is students are getting ready for the cold at Z School. They do a monthly bike and walk to school day, so they're getting prepped there with all of their hats and coats. And then on the left, we have the fourth and fifth grade informances for families that happened last week at Z School. And a couple of things I just want to add about the elementaries. We all have informances and ours was rescheduled because of last night's little storm. We are working with Melican to even change our time, maybe back to six, so people can get to our informants at six and then pop over to Melican's Evening of Song. We also, all four elementary schools had food drives, so that was really a nice way to celebrate November and that season of giving and gratitude. Here at Melican, the top left, we have Mr. Lavoie. He is doing one of his sectionals with his students. They have three concerts scheduled. I think it's the ninth, tenth, and eleventh of December. The bottom left corner, the Equity of Opportunity box, there's ninety-five students that are showing up for their community group meeting. The next time, they're going to break out grade level specific to really do a deep dive into their work. The top right corner, we have sixth graders doing some arts and crafts. There were several choices. It was a choice activity that the sixth graders had on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And then the bottom right corner, we have our eighth grade math team meeting together with their coach discussing Carnegie math, and that was on Monday. So that's a little snapshot.
I love this picture thing.
Yeah. Is it working? Yeah.
Although I find myself always looking for my kids, too.
And they let me be the creator of the slide deck and then I just share it out every month and they can change it if they didn't, they don't like my sparkles and glitter. That was kind of the theme this month was little sparkles and glitter.
Yeah, no, and I like how it's linked to, you know, learning outcomes or the purpose. I love that. Makes it real easy.
Yeah, it's clear that even though this time of year, there's a lot of distractions, the kids are still pretty focused in on the activities that are happening in at school and that's a lot of fun to see. So thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
Yeah, you as well.
Safe travels.
Safe travels.
Long ride.
Long ride home.
Okay, we've got legislative update?
So no updates at this time.
Presentation schedule?
So we've been busy with school improvement plans and presentations, so when we look at the months of January through May, we've tried to allocate upcoming presentations and communicate to folks who will be presenting so they can be prepared.
Okay. School visits?
Yes, so the buildings and ground safety and inspections policy, C one sixty speaks to visiting some of our facilities and inspecting them from a school committee perspective. So we're proposing to visit the P Peaslee School and Z School prior to the February fourth school committee meeting. So the idea would be probably around four-thirty or five, take a tour of Z. We identified Z because that is where we're moving preschool back to, so we thought it'd be nice to kind of walk through that layout. And then Peaslee because the building project, again, another opportunity to tour Peaslee and also invite other boards and committees to join us.
Well, only question there for me is just the difference between seeing a school with all the kids engaged in it and seeing it without. Just your thoughts there, like how does that best serve kind of? I know it's disruptive for us to then go into a space where kids are.
I would invite any of the school committee members who'd like to take a tour when school is in session to speak out to me and I'd be happy to take a tour.
It's really those in-between times where you see just like the wow.
And it's impressive.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Community Preservation Act application for the Melican ball fields?
Yes, so we were approached by a very familiar person, Erin Tagliaferry, who has been involved with a lot of different committees and is also on our capital plan to really look at the Melican ball fields. So the opportunity, although not very long ago, came to us of putting together an application for the C P C and they were welcoming enough to entertain it. So we were able to get an extension of their deadline, which was, I believe, November first. So we quickly had to pull this together and the proposal is on the agenda for tomorrow evening. So I'll be presenting with Erin tomorrow evening about the Melican fields and this would be a renovation project for both the softball field and the baseball field, which was recently decided that we would be responsible for maintaining it and that is why it landed on the capital plan for the last round, not for this upcoming year. I believe it was two years out that we were targeting for because we had other things that were priorities, but there are certain things that the C P C can entertain and this is definitely one of them that fits their criteria. And that's why it kind of leapfrogged and became what we were going to apply for and with the support of Erin who has been outstanding in helping me put things together for this.
Question about, does it do anything to the asset of the land, like the C P C? Like is there any change to the ownership or the stewardship of the land like this? It's just the contractual obligation to the maintenance of the athletic fields?
Yes, well, this would be the renovation of that, not for any ongoing maintenance.
Okay, but the town has surrendered ongoing maintenance.
Of the ball fields?
Correct. Right, so I just want like, so the town has surrendered that for their choice in that there's a bit of a, we got to figure this out. Best path forward feels like we've got a local individual who's going to really care for these fields in a way that is going to be meaningful in the long term.
If we, if C P C accepts the application and moves the project, then they'd have to remain ball fields.
Yep.
So that would be the condition.
Well, that's the part that I'm asking about, and that's the part that I'm asking about the land use, like how it locks in the land use because if the C P C will have boundaries that they will accept things into that they don't release.
Yes.
So that's fine. I just wanted to, I wanted to make sure of that. Okay.
Joan?
Yes, to the chairman, I have a question and probably then through the chair to Pete. What are, you just talked about the renovations to the field. Could you give more specific details, what it would entail? And what is the price that you're asking? Is it for the total renovation or is it only for the partial amount?
Good, good question, Joan. So when we learned of this over the summer, we did do a deep dive into what we were talking about, the scale and scope of what the fields needed to be really viable for our programs. So we did have a couple of things looked at. One was the fencing, which included the backstop and the dugout areas as well as the fields themselves, which was definitely a rehabilitation project, especially with the infield of the baseball field, which has been really, has not been attended to for many, many years and basically needs to be recut and sawed, would need to be laid in the infield with the proper dimensions to really bring it up to a safety standard as well as a playability standard. So the scope of the project is a combination of the fencing around both fields, not completely, just the backstops and dugout areas, as well as the infields themselves. Softball's a little easier because it is already like a gravel, clay-type surface. It would just have to be rebuilt with a little bit of excavating and plus material coming in so it was level, get proper drainage and all that, so that would remain, you know, playable throughout the spring and summer seasons and fall.
What would be the cost? What are you asking?
Good, good question. So I'm sorry, I didn't answer that part. So when we did this in preparation for the capital plan, we had budgeted three hundred thousand dollars. Even through this lot of work that Erin supported me with in the last couple of weeks, we are just south of that three hundred thousand dollar mark with a ten percent contingency. So things kind of align kind of nicely, so what we had on the capital plan is aligning to what the proposal will be tomorrow evening.
Okay, and another question. When would the approval come and does that have to go to town meeting and are you looking for this to be done in the spring?
So Joan, my, my understanding is that it would become a town meeting article and need to be approved at town meeting and therefore probably, because then we would have to do the procurement and then we would go out and have it done over the summer of twenty-six, of the upcoming summer. It would not be done in time for the spring season.
Okay, not the spring?
Correct.
Okay, then my question is tying into what, I'm sorry, Bryce, can I continue?
Please.
Okay, thank you. Tying into what Bryce talked about, about the maintenance of this and then, I mean, the ownership, because the ownership came to the schools on this. How, see, if we would give this approved, this three hundred thousand with a ten percent contingency, would we be able, would this have to be done, what is the maintenance, would it have to be done in twenty twenty-seven?
So what we've estimated based on what we do at Algonquin and what we've heard about the other fields, the maintenance can run anywhere between fifteen and thirty thousand dollars a year, depending on the location, obviously, the use, the frequency of use and all those types of things. These are numbers that we've gotten not only from our work at Algonquin, but also from some of the youth programs that support and maintain some of the other fields in town as well as in Southborough.
Okay, so that would be something we would have as a, an operational budget?
Potentially, Joan, or a portion of. The other thing that we've gotten as part of this application is support from the Algonquin Baseball and Softball Association. That's the youth baseball and softball, youth baseball and softball for the community. And like they do for some of the other fields in town, they would participate in the maintenance of that. We just haven't, we don't have the detail or the full commitment of that yet, but, you know, through this process, we have learned of their support for the project and also their willingness to help us going forward with the maintenance of the fields.
Okay, I'd like to thank you for your transparency on these financial things because, you know, all towns and states and even the country, we're going through hard economic times. So I appreciate you giving me the transparency on these numbers as we go forward and I'd like to wish you a lot of luck and hope that you do, and you and Erin, get the approval tomorrow and please tell Erin, as a former school committee member, I appreciate everything that she's doing to help us out at this time.
I will, I will do that.
All right, Kristen, please.
Quick question, dovetailing off of what Bryce was saying before. So let's, if it's approved and then it says, okay, this has to stay a baseball field, is there a limit, time limit on that? Would it impact when we then go to renovate Melican, for example, which I know is down the road, but?
I don't believe it would, especially for future renovations.
Well, they could release it, right? Like they could, you'd go back to them and ask them to release, yeah.
Yeah.
And as long as there, there are plans to have a baseball and softball field in whatever new design.
Yeah, I see what you mean. I was thinking of Peaslee last night where there's all these different designs and we're going to do this and do that, like they didn't want us to be limited, even though it was far off.
Well, as an example, the C P C in Southborough did a field right across the parking lot from the Nearian. As part of the proposal, we made sure to include that as part of it. Not that that would be the case, but that was an obstacle. It was just something they did because that investment was made there. So I think it would be considered, but we would need ball fields out anyway, so.
Okay, moving on to old business, M A S C, M A S S joint conference updates. Was it a wonderful dinner in celebration of Joan? Yeah? Joan, did you cry?
Yes, I did in the beginning because when they did a different introduction, it was different than what was in the letter they had asked me. I was just really shocked about what they said. I was, I was very touched. I mean, to be nominated by your peers and benones to me, I didn't ask for, it was such an honor and it was honored to have Greg there, to be there as my former boss, my mentor, and now as superintendent and to have Kristen there also. It was a wonderful evening. It really was. And then I got to do some Kennedy things afterwards, so that was great.
Any other?
So, pardon me?
Any other items that came out of that that you guys want to let us know about?
Definitely. Since Kelly is not present tonight, Kelly, you know, was voted in as our delegate to the annual M A S C meeting. I was elected from the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee, so my report with Kelly was to go to the meeting, which we did, and it was the shortest amount of time that I've heard on record for the meeting. The first thing they did was they reapproved, the reauthorization of previously approved resolutions that were going to be expiring at the end of three years and that is in the report that I provided, the senior packet, and that was the group that expired this November, which were regarding sanctuary laws for transgender students to increase the maximum bounds allowed by the Special Education Reserve Fund, reauthorize the membership of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, preserving local governance of Massachusetts schools, personal financial literacy education, and the final reauthorization was establishment of a regional school assessment reserve fund. After that was done, the only, and vote was unanimous, to reauthorize those following six, previous six resolutions I talked about. The other one was, was a resolution number one, was removing B M I testing from schools, which was submitted by the Grafton School Committee. The B M I formula was developed in nineteen thirty-two based on measuring the population of adult men, presumably all white, and it is not a helpful health screening tool. But there was an amendment made from a Quincy nurse that wanted to add that the M A S C urges the banning of the B M I screening except when a student's healthcare provider requests the screening with parent guardian approval. The amendment carried an affirmative. Yes, votes were fifty-six, no were thirty-three. And then after that amendment passed and put into the resolution, it was unanimous to add that amendment to the resolution. So that was the business portion of the meeting and Greg and Kelly and I attended a couple of sessions together and they were informative and people wanted more information on them. And I was thinking that we probably, with, with all of our experience, I would think that we could probably do a wonderful job in doing the presentation, but I will bring that up right now, that we could do a breakout session, so.
Okay.
But that was reported from the M A S C conference.
Thank you. May I ask you a question? Okay, M S B A updates?
Sure, so I'll turn it over to Becky.
Okay, so I will get started on the Peaslee Building Committee. We had reported at last month's meeting that we had selected a designer and that's Flansburgh Architects to work with us on this project. Over the past month, we have been negotiating with Flansburgh on their contract in collaboration with Jason Little, the Town Finance Director. So we have arrived at a final contract with them. However, the combination of the two contracts with the O P M and with the designer did put us over the budget of the nine hundred thousand that was appropriated at the, I think it was the twenty twenty-four town meeting. And so we are short by about thirty thousand dollars. And so one of the solutions that we are asking for tonight is that the committee allocate thirty thousand dollars from the operational budget to be used towards this contract so that we can supplement and we can move forward with this project. We did hold a kickoff meeting with Flansburgh last night as part of the Peaslee Building Committee where they outlined some of the timelines that will get us ultimately to a decision of a building project. It's about an eighteen-month timeframe from now until when we would be bringing that to the towns for their approval at town meeting. And so I guess at this point, I would just ask the committee to consider the additional thirty thousand dollars for these services.
Will we be considering those within the line item transfers? Or are you asking for us to initiate a motion to approve a line item transfer?
I am asking you to initiate an approval for a line item transfer for that fund. I will have to create an account from our operational budget for that, for this line item to be, so I have not done that yet. We will work with Jason Little to set that up in our accounting system.
Okay. How would that be funded?
I will find funds within the operational budget. There are a few line items that do have balances. I'm thinking specifically, I think the teacher salary line item right now does have a balance that we would be able to use those, the thirty thousand from.
Okay.
And we had set aside some funds at the beginning of the year to be used kind of in case unexpected expenses had occurred.
Okay, for the sake of understanding kind of how you walk down from the one sixty down to the thirty, right? Like it's like, oh, you're so close to just getting the nine. But I think just for people to hear a little bit about like, hey, like it's not just go back to them and get it for nine. We already did a hundred and thirty X worth of.
Yeah, so we actually were able to renegotiate our contract with our O P M P M A. We are very thankful. They've been a great partner so far in this process. And so they did renegotiate their original contract. We also had some savings in our environmental and site testing. It's a small amount, it's about fifty-six hundred, but that will be used towards the P M A contract as well as we had like a forty-five thousand dollar kind of other bucket. And so we did reduce that down to ten thousand because the architect has assured us that everything that will need to be done as part of that project is included in the environmental site testing that they did already contract with us for. So it was, it was a lot of, I think, negotiating over the past few weeks, but we did arrive at, I think, a good conclusion.
Any discussion before I ask for a motion?
No, I would just say I appreciate, I know all the hard and very quick work that happened. There was a lot of calls, emails and that and forth that, you know, and it just went through the select board as well and then popped up on their radar. And yeah, I really appreciate, you know, the hard work of going back and saying, hey, no, that's not going to work. I guess my only question would be? I guess my only question would be, obviously, that, you know, not that you foresee this happening again, but, um, do you have any assurances from the OPM or other project managers where this is not, like, this is our budget and we need to stay within the budget and, you know, I, I mean, no, you don't want to go through this again.
That question was asked last night at the Building Committee, and both firms assured us that this is the budget that they will be working within.
Mm-hmm, okay.
The one thing I would share, that the nine hundred thousand dollars that was approved at town meeting was the right number.
Yeah.
So that if, if we had presented one point one million, that would have been spent.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I do feel like this is, um, using the town's allocation for this work, um, we are being really fiscally responsible.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I too, you know, have great faith in the commitment of, um, PMA to do its work and, and not cut corners and be committed to us. There is a benefit to these organizations to continue the work after, after the design. Um, there's the construction phase, which is something they'll be very interested in, in partnering.
Yep.
Joan?
Uh, yes, I just need to have that dollar amount restated. Was that an increase of thirty thousand?
That's correct.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the increase in the feasibility study allocation in the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
Can, can I just pause for a minute, Joan? In the memo, I did put a motion, um, that's required by MSBA.
I have it in front of me.
Yeah, why don't I have that, why don't I have that?
All right, I will rescind my motion, I'll rescind it.
Okay, I, I move that the school committee approve using thirty thousand dollars from its annual appropriation to pay for fea- to pay for feasibility study and schematic design costs for the Margaret E. Peaslee School Feasibility Project. This amount is in addition to the nine hundred thousand previously appropriated at annual town meeting on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, resulting in a total of nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars available for this project.
Second, thanks, Kristen.
Um, roll call vote, all those, uh, sorry, uh, roll call vote, Kristen?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And Bryce is a yes. It moves unanimously.
Thank you.
No?
Okay, um, any other notes there?
Just the Z roof project.
Z school roof project update. Keith?
Yes, so we have been continuing to work collaboratively with our OPM for that project, um, and our architect, um, really getting down to a solid cost estimate for that project. Um, we do, um, are considering the improvements necessary for ADA. Um, that's being considered, uh, at this time, if the threshold is, will be exceeded. So that's something that we're, we're keeping in mind. They have not given the final, um, budget of what they are, uh, moving forward with, but we're very close to that, and we're asking them to really sharpen their pencil and make sure that what we're doing is absolutely necessary. Um, so that's continued work that we will have, and, um, we do have a deadline upcoming for MSBA, so we will definitely keep you posted.
Thank you. Questions, Kristen?
Yeah, can you provide any more details on how they got to the number that they presented, um, to the Financial Planning Committee and the project itself? Is it still in planning phases or, like, because the metal roof was talked about, for example? Is that what it is? And then that's, and I guess I would ask, why? Or are we still looking at options?
We're, we're still looking at options, and those are the things we're asking them to sharpen their pencil on, of what are the things that, um, you know, will be necessary, not only the, the top layer of the roof, be it, uh, metal or shingle, but what's underneath, structurally, what has to be done. We do have to have a portion of the roof that's solar ready, so that's something else that they're investigating more deeply, which inquires them to really get up there and look at the structural integrity and places where it can go. So those are the pieces that they're fine tuning now. The latest was that they wanted to have their hazmat consultant come out and just double check. So that was the report I got on Monday right after Thanksgiving holiday, is that we're making arrangements to have that consultant come out and do one final check before they can give us the final, uh, budget of what it is.
And is the, the solar ready portion or, and any other pieces, what either MSBA or the state of Massachusetts mandates that you're stuck to, or...
They do, they do require that a portion of the roof project be solar ready. That's one of the new parts of the, uh, accelerated repair program, which is good because we already were thinking of doing that with a new roof. So it's a matter of where and how, and they're helping us with that, the architects are, because of the load and the readiness of the, the new, um, substrate of the roof.
And what other pieces are, are sort of dictated to you, and this is what I've gotta do?
Um, I, I'd say, you know, really, it's coming down to the investigation of the structure, which I'm learning a little bit about, uh, the outside seams, how the drainage is working. That was one of the problems, that was one of the failures of the Z roof as we were having. You know, things were concaved in places. Why was that happening? So that's the thing they've been investigating and talking about, how things had to be restructured. They're also talking about some masonry with some of the mezzanine levels of, of Z, especially where, like, the, the gymnasium is, as an example. That curbing that goes into the roof, how is that done the proper way? And what type of structure needs to be there to make sure it doesn't become a failure point? So those are the things that they, you know, have been diving into.
Okay, and that gets into my next question, actually, because I was gonna ask if you could refresh my memory in what is actually happening at the Z roof, like, where are we at? It's not as caved in, obviously, but like...
You know, it has had, you know, routine places of failure, with a couple of places that have popped up. Um, when you go onto the roof itself, you can see vegetation that's growing in places where you're not getting proper drainage, all those types of things. And we've had, knock on wood, we haven't had those real rooms that have been come chronic, like we've had in some of our other buildings, like Proctor, which we were fortunate enough to fix. We have more, uh, some common areas that have frequent leaks that we keep an eye on in every storm, even yesterday, as a matter of fact. So those are the things that are just monitored, but we don't have any of those chronic failures that we've seen others places. But we have signs of it on the roof, and that's why this qualified because of its current condition.
Because of, like, it's, so qualified for MSBA because of its condition?
Correct, so met, met MSBA's criteria, which is, which is pretty rigorous.
Yeah.
That it needs a, needs replacement.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, their acceptance is almost the indicator key.
It really, it really is, right, and I think that's accurate, because they do go out and do a preliminary evaluation. They go up and are taking photos and are peeling back things here and there. They're not doing the deep dive that has occurred over the last few months, which is really the investigation, and that's how we qualify for the program.
Okay, do you, you may not know this offhand, it's all right, but I think it would be good for the public to know, too, like, how rigorous that is.
Mm.
You know, what's the acceptance rate, or just the fact that we were accepted and that's, is a sign that it's a very good qualifier, because I know there was concern over, you know, the recent coverage of the Z roof, but it's something that needs to be done.
Hundred percent. And our OPM and architects are, I've been very good. They dove right in, they know this roof much better than I do, they're experts in this. And I, we're relying on them to give us good information, not just the cost estimates, but what's necessary to really make it, um, what it needs to be structurally, you know, be safe.
Do you know if they have done anything else with Northborough, like, projects, the town or whatnot?
Those partic- uh, firms?
The what, yeah, who's working on the OPM on the Z roof?
Raymond?
Raymond actually did the design for Algonquin.
Yes, yep.
I think that's good history for people to know, too.
Was that, was there another one?
A year before, something like that.
In Woodward?
And also...
Yeah, Woodward, yeah, in Southborough.
Oh, Woodward, okay, yeah, that's good to know.
It's also important to note that when, when we're presenting cost estimates, it's gross.
Yes.
It's, it's the cost of the entire roof, so Northborough is approximately forty-eight percent reimbursable.
Yeah.
Um, so also, the feasibility and schematic design money, that nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars is also reimbursable.
Right.
Half the forty-eight percent, so, um, you know, I think we're, we're going to need a meet, uh, need to meet between now and probably potentially next week or the week after, uh, to update you on the information that's going to be submitted to MSBA. So that is something we'll need to, to think about and schedule.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
And they will be available to be present at that meeting to answer, you know, better, better than I can.
Great, no, thank you, that was very helpful.
You're welcome. I've learned a lot.
Okay. Enrollments?
So enrollment, uh, enrollments are in your packet as of eleven eighteen twenty twenty-five. So as, as you will see, we did added, we did add FY twenty-seven enrollment projections. Um, however, we've not moved teachers forward, so the number of teachers in each section, um, is the same as it is this year. So we will do that work in the next, um, few weeks and, and months ahead. Um, and we're also, this is really important in terms of our budget process, making sure we have the right number of teachers to maintain class sizes according to the school committee's policy. Um, so from, from the start of the school year until now, um, we have a, a variance of, of sixteen, uh, fewer students than, than we started to...
Okay.
I just, sorry.
Go ahead, please, Kristen.
No, I just want to say, I appreciate that, I, I mean, both in my classroom and for my students, I see very clear differences between larger classes and smaller classes. And, um, so I think it's a very important priority, and I appreciate that you guys make it a priority.
You're seeing it at higher ed, a reference point between students who have lower ra- higher ratios and lower ratios.
And if I have a class that's smaller versus one that might be double the size, but based on my enrollment, it's a very different outcome as well.
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure, sure.
So they're, yeah, both are true.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, FY twenty-six budget line item transfers?
So I will turn it over to Becky for the next, uh, three items.
Next two. Next two items.
Two, and then we'll go back to Keith.
Budget line item transfers.
Yeah.
We already approved the capital.
They approved.
Yeah, there we go. All right, um, so the line item transfers, there are three new line items that are showing as over expended in the report that's enclosed in your packet, and that is the report as of, um, November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, those line items were, um, business and finance, and that was due to some salary adjustments, um, administrative technology, and that is for a new software purchase. And then lastly, for out-of-district tuitions, and that was, um, we were setting aside some funds due to a potential expense that, um, we are still unsure as to whether or not the district would, um, be responsible for. So we set some funds aside for that, just in case. Um, I will note that the, um, Northborough budget as of the end of November still has a, a fairly healthy balance of four hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars, which is one point five nine percent of the operational budget that is still remaining. Um, one thing that we have done, though, since the last school committee meeting, is we have put a freeze on the budget, and it is not because of the budget balance. It's in looking at our FY twenty-seven, um, budget picture and trying to be conservative with this year's budget in preparation for that.
Appreciate that. Joan?
Uh, yes, Becky, did, did I understand correctly that you said you did put a freeze on the operational budget?
That's correct, that's correct, yes.
Is it on the entire budget or just certain line items?
So, um, what we normally do is, um, when we put a freeze on, it is with the understanding that if schools or departments do need something, that they will have a conversation with me. Um, so we're just being careful about our spending, um, and just making sure that, uh, you know, that what's being purchased is absolutely necessary, and that, uh, is also something that is, we're putting the priority on things that are necessary for the classroom.
Okay, thank you for the extra time and work that you have to look after each one base.
Thank you.
Do you wanna, do you wanna take a vote before, before you move on to the next one, or do you wanna do both?
I actually combined both of them in one, so, if you don't mind voting on both of them at the same time.
No, you've got it, you've got the wording here at some point. Okay, I will take a motion to approve the FY twenty-six budget line item transfers and the monthly general, and approve the FY twenty-six monthly general fund expenditure report.
So moved?
Second.
It moved by Kristen, second by Joan, roll call vote, Kristen?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I am Bryce, and I'm a yes. That is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna approve the capital plan? No changes?
No changes.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the FY twenty-seven through FY thirty-two, uh, capital plan.
So moved?
So moved. So moved?
Second.
Moved by Joan, second by Kristen, roll call vote, Kristen?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And Bryce is a yes, unanimously. And now we get into the really fun stuff. FY ten twenty-seven budget priorities, uh, Greg, if you wanted to just start it?
Sure, so I will, um, be happy to present the revised preliminary budget presentation, um, to the committee. Uh, let me just share my screen, hang on one second. All right, so I'm happy to present the revised preliminary budget for FY twenty-seven to the committee. Um, since our last meeting, the leadership team, principals, the directors have spent a lot of time analyzing and thinking about, um, that, the preliminary budget and how we can reduce it. Uh, as you all know, is a significant increase over FY, um, twenty-six. The town has given some clear directions around a three percent budget increase over fiscal year twenty-six. Um, and we've worked toward getting to that, um, number. As Becky presented last meeting, um, we have some budget drivers, um, special education transportation, special education out-of-district tuition, special education collaborative tuition, and salaries, all which are, um, important and legal obligations that we do have. So I will, uh, spend a lot of time getting to the punchline, but since the presentation in November, um, we've spent a lot of time sharpening our pencils and looking at reductions to the preliminary budget, uh, to bring that eleven point seven five percent to a lower number. Um, we were able to identify four hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars in reductions without impacting, um, services to students, um, which brought the, which brings the revised preliminary budget to a little over, a, a little under thirty-four million dollars, which is a ten point three one percent increase over fiscal year twenty-six. Um, and that increase represents three million ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So that is a significant increase over, um, FY twenty-six and a far, um, far from the three percent budget we were asked to develop. I'll just speak briefly about the reductions that we did make, um, to get to that number. Um, we did apply reductions in funds, uh, for instructional materials and some savings from staff retirements. Um, we have worked as a, a student support services team to really reconfigure services without in- impacting the level of services. In fact, I think the reconfiguration of services actually improved some of the services that we provide students. Um, we reduced some curriculum, um, expenses, we moved those to a grant, and we're proposing reducing, um, part of the implementation of science curriculum. Um, there's a reduction of seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars, which, um, shifting the purchase of technology to a lease, which allows us to AMRize the purchase over a greater period of time. And then operations, um, reduce some funds for building and grounds and maintenance. Um, and then thinking about how we can best use some of our, uh, facilities rental account, uh, funds to offset. So the total offset is four hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars, far from where we need to get to.
Am I allowed to ask questions, or do you want me to wait?
Yeah, do you wanna?
I was gonna say, when, when do you wanna jump in?
So interrupt at any time.
Yeah, I saw science curriculum and went, hold on. Um, I, I guess I just would like to hear more about in the curriculum line, um, good job on moving things to the grant, always love to see that. You guys are, are free to identifying, applying for, and, and working for those grants. Um, when you say reduce implimation, implementation of a sci- of science curriculum, what are you thinking of, what are you envisioning?
Uh, we would be thinking about phased implementation, so probably what that would look like is starting with not all three grade levels of the middle school, but starting potentially with, depending on, on sort of where the budget lands, it could be starting with sixth, and then the next year adding seventh, and then the next year adding eighth, or it could be starting with two grades. Like, there's a lot of different iterations. be starting with two grades, like, there's a lot of different iterations, but that's what we mean by phased.
So, the new, so, we're not reducing what students are getting, but at the same time, we're not moving everybody up to this new thing that we really like all at once. We're, yeah, we are in, so, seventh and eighth grade, so essentially, like, my older two would not get the new curriculum, but my younger two eventually would, like.
So, the experience is constant from last year, we're not changing the experience, with the exception of, you know, maybe a grade level or two.
Right, and of course, that makes sense to start with sixth grade, 'cause then their experience is consistent as they move up, yeah, so if you're gonna do that. Which, again, I love that you guys are creative and you're thinking about how can we do this, I hate that you have to think about it and, you know, not be able to just be like, let's rule this out.
And I will just say with the science, we have not yet, yet made the decision about which curriculum, and there are differences between the two, and so, what we're sort of budgeting for is what would be kind of the most expensive of the iterations that could happen. So, there's also changes that could happen depending on the selection that we make. So, that's something we'll have to wait and see, but we wanna make the right decision and then say, now, how do we do this in a way that's, you know, keeping the students at the center?
Mm-hmm, yeah, thank you.
So, really more information around the budget drivers, I think this is an important conversation to have. So, of the three million dollars, three, three, over three million dollar increase, we are seeing one million four hundred and forty thousand two hundred and sixty-five or forty-six point five seven percent of that increase come from three line items that are important line items. One is special education transportation, so transporting students to tuitions programs, and then within our district, transporting students to school with specialized transportation. So, that was a three hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollar increase at a district tuition. So, we have seen a significant increase in students who require out-of-district placement. So, these are team-driven decisions, thinking about what students need. We have many programs in our system that students attend that are specialized programming. However, we're not able to meet the needs of all students, so we've seen a significant increase in out-of-district tuitions. So, the increase is seven hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars over fiscal year twenty-six. So, that's a twenty-three point four three percent of the three million dollar increase. And then, lastly, collaborative tuition, so we are a member of Assabah Valley Collaborative, and again, they have some specialized programming, so teams have gone through the process, collaborative families, looking at the IEPs, and have decided that for some students, the collaborative placements are the, the best placement for students to receive their education, and that increase was four hundred and three thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars. So, the, the total of those three line items together, combined, equal forty-six point five seven percent of the three million dollar increase that we're seeing. All other line items represent a fifty-three percent of the three million dollar increase. And if we said that, you know, special educate, we, we weren't seeing these increases in special education, that the reduction to get to a three percent budget would be approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which we feel we could do to get to a three percent. So, so, we, we feel a tension between fiscally responsible and educationally sound, that we have a legal obligation to educate all students, that we are seeing an increase in educating students who need something different than we can offer within our district. That is really difficult to think how we can get to a three percent budget. So, so, right now, we're still doing that work, we still have a lot of conversations to have. We're meeting with the town, we met with town administrator Stephanie Bacon and the finance director, Jason Little, today, and we've shared this information, and we shared that we're presenting this this evening, that we have much more work to do, but it is a daunting task. So, we also wanna talk about the impact of getting to a five percent increase, so that ten point three one percent increase to a five percent increase. So, we'd have to find five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in, in line item offsets. We have to reduce eight point nine positions, which would impact class size and programs. And, you know, we would propose using FY twenty-seven circuit breaker that we'll receive in FY twenty-seven. Typically, we receive circuit breaker, for example, in FY twenty-six, we'll receive, we'll receive circuit breaker reimbursement, that money will be used in FY twenty-seven.
Yeah, we used to be in reverse of this.
So, so, we're proposing that the money that we receive in FY twenty-seven for circuit breaker reimbursement, that we would use in FY twenty-eight, three hundred thousand of that, we would use in FY twenty-seven. That's a risk, because it's hard to project what FY twenty-eight will bring. Those total reductions would bring us to a five percent budget. And that is assuming that the special education costs are the costs that we presented earlier.
And that we absorb them, right, like that?
Yeah. If we were asked to get to two, three percent, which we are being asked, you know, we would still have the, the offsets of line items, we would, we would increase the number of FTEs, we'd have to reduce to by fourteen point nine. And again, the only way we can impact that number of FTEs is class size.
That circuit breaker number is the same, is that a limit, like a legal limit that you would have to?
No, it's just they're trying not to use too much of a future year's reimbursement. Historically, we used to use last year's reimbursement to fund.
The next.
For the next, and now, we're saying we're gonna use next to fund this.
When does that money actually, so, my understanding was that that money actually came in, like, towards the end of the fiscal year, right? So, how, are you just waiting till the end of the fiscal year and then applying it to, like, May, June, trying to do that, or, sorry, how are you?
It comes in throughout, pre- um, quarterly throughout the year, so we would be receiving it in FY twenty-seven, but in smaller, in quarterly increments.
Okay, I see.
So, again, from a five percent, what's the same, is we'd have the same line item offsets, there's not, if you look at our line item budget, there's not a lot of increases. We would reduce fourteen point nine FTEs, which again, would be class sizes and programs, and we're specifically not getting into any detail, because this is anxiety provoking for our system and our organization.
Totally.
And then FY circuit breaker, so that would bring our total reductions down by two million one hundred and ninety-six thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars, which would bring us to a three percent budget that the town is, is looking for. However, we're not ready to do that.
To do that, yeah.
And we still need to do more work, we need more conversations. I think, you know, we need to get a better sense of what the overall town budget looks like. So, this evening, where we're landing with a revised preliminary is the thirty-three million eighty-two thousand six hundred and eighty dollars, which is a ten point three one percent increase. This, this has been a daunting task. We continue to work on this, and we will continue to have conversations with principals and directors and think about how we can protect the programming that we have, the level services programming that we have, and remain fiscally responsible. But, I will share at this time, those two, there's tension between them.
Yeah, they're not aligned, they're not in alignment.
Yeah.
So.
Quite a bit. Okay, thank you, thank you very much, I mean, this is a huge task this year, and things have shifted over the last four years in very meaningful ways. I do wish for us to keep in mind that this is not just the outcome of one year of activity. This is the outcome of decades and years and of, of activity, both at the, the town and school levels, and we are gonna want to commit ourselves to the values, I think, first, and then go find the dollars, which I think you guys do every day, which is, is, gives me some confidence that we're gonna get to a place that, where we can find some consensus on, so.
And I, and I would share, if you look at historically, what are most volatile line items, it's special education transportation, it's out-of-district, and it's collaboratives, because students move in with needs, needs change during a, a, a student's kind of trajectory in education, we don't have a stabilization fund.
No.
Where we can balance the peaks and valleys, so, we are at a peak, and we have no mechanism to be able to level that out over time.
And this has gotta get to a state-level policy for special ed costs and reimbursements, like, it really can't be driving everybody over a fiscal cliff and think that that's gonna be all right.
So, one of our recommendations to the committee will be to consider asking the town at the town meeting to establish a special education stabilization fund, it is one of those funds that the school committee can, can fund. Establishing it is one thing, funding it is another, so, but we need, we need a longer-term mechanism.
I'd have to go take a look at what the, the funding mechanisms are, if it's, is it taxation, or is it OpEx offsets?
It would be through our operating budget, where we would, it would be a line.
A budget portion?
Yes, that would, that would fund the special education stabilization.
And that fund could live in a space where it is generating a positive return over time?
It would still be held by the town, so it would be like a stabilization fund that's in one of their accounts. I don't know if, I will look to see if it speaks to like the, no, it, it would most likely be in one of their bank accounts.
Yep, just sitting there.
Yes.
And there is, you know.
Appreciating.
Procedures on how to access that fund and to access it to, but that's something we'll, we'll study more and make a recommendation, most likely in January.
Okay, I heard Joan.
Joan, just, just one point, Joan, before you go, Lauren has joined us remotely.
Awesome, thank you, Lauren.
Yeah, so she just popped on about five minutes ago.
Great, thank you for that.
Sorry, Joan, go ahead.
That's okay, Becky or Bryce, the question on that stabilization fund to be asked at the town meeting, what is the vote that would be needed? Is it a majority, is it two-thirds? Do you know what that vote would be?
It's a majority.
Majority vote, Joan?
The majority?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the school committee would need to vote to approve a stabilization fund, and then it would also need to go to a town meeting vote.
Yeah.
It would need to go to the slot board to get into town meeting first, too, right?
So, that would be a future agenda item that we would need to have in, right? And what, 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 do we know the date when the town meeting board's closed?
Um, oh, I was just looking at that.
Kristen thinks that is specific to special.
Yeah, we have some time.
Be a little bit.
We have, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Joan. Any other thoughts?
I'm wondering if that, the bank, that it has to go to a town bank account, is that a legal thing, or is that like a negotiable?
No, the town holds all of the.
They just decide?
Yes, yeah, that, that's the purview of the town treasurer.
Ah, so we need to talk to Jason Little about that.
Or at least.
So, the question is, the question that I, that we're thinking about internally, and it's conversations we're having with Jason Little and Stephanie is, depending on where that article is on the agenda, we could create it if the town approves it, and there could be a mechanism to fund it outside of this.
Yeah.
Outside of the operating budget, okay.
You would ideally want it to be outside of.
We'd fund it, then we'd expend it.
Correct, yeah, okay. Uh, yeah, we'll take those ideas left and right. Okay. All right. Sorry, now that Lauren is on, I just wanna give her a window of time to see if she has any questions.
I think it's just to clarify what your original question was, Bryce, I didn't hear the answer, so, in the creation of the stabilization fund, I think I heard Becky say that it would be a recurring line item in our operating budget, so essentially, we have to still find funds for our operating budget.
Yes, so, that, that is the, that is the mechanism, so, and if you were to put, like, I'm just gonna throw like fifty thousand dollars in each year, and then it could stay into that fund year after year, so then, if there was a year like we're having right now, then we would have those funds available to us. So, the intent is to kind of build it up, and so that we have that available for use.
Okay, and then in years?
More in the case Greg talked about, where we do one infusion, so that we can use it.
Okay, so, in, in years, say that we didn't use that money, those line items would still have whatever the percentage increase would be for the following fiscal year, so you would see a little bit of essentially interest, if you will?
Yeah, you would, you wouldn't really see interest, the, the town, the town wouldn't allocate it, it would just be what we would, it would be like a revolving account that we have on our books right now, where it would be like in a separate, we, it would have its own account number in our system, and then the funds would live there. So, the funding mechanism would be from our operational budget, but it would kind of be like a transfer from the operational budget to this, this stabilization fund, kind of like what we do with the OPEB at the region, so.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Okay. Moving on, school committee member reports? Now it's time?
I would say the wellness committee met yesterday, I was unfortunately not able to attend 'cause of the timing, but they discussed their goals and are planning, very early stages of planning wellness week, and also planning on collaborating more with the schools on working on wellness, kind of what we really talked about today, and they also talked about the policies that we really talked about in the joint meeting.
I heard Joanie buzz.
I was just gonna say, I don't have any school committee reports tonight.
Thank you. Lauren?
I would like to just reiterate our congratulations for Joan, however, because I know that Kelly and Kristen were able to celebrate Joan in person at the MAS C recognition dinner for lifetime achievements, so congratulations, Jill.
Thank you, Lauren, that was very sweet of you. I would just say, more important than even the award, was being honored by all of you and supporting the nomination by Kelly, so, that meant more to me to do, to get that recognition from my peers, so, from the bottom of my heart, thank you to everybody, 'cause I certainly enjoy the work that we do together, thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Joan, did I tell you, so I shared, I took a picture of Joan getting the award, and I shared it on my Facebook, the school committee Facebook page, and MAS C actually picked it up and shared it on there, since Joan was getting her award on their Facebook.
It went viral, Joan.
Hey, you know, hey, Kristen, can you send that to me, whatever that link is?
Yeah, sure, yeah, it was one of the pictures that I sent to you, that it's, it's on Facebook, I can probably link you. I think that's when we figured out you weren't, you didn't like my school committee page, I was like, what did we do? We're friends, but no, not on my school committee page.
I'm gonna go this hand here, I think the last time my picture might have showed out somewhere was when I was at age of ten, and I won an art contest, and I met Three Stooges, so.
Okay.
I actually, yeah, that's.
Yeah, that one's gotta come out at the bar some night.
I wonder why I didn't like the one on Facebook, I don't like all the arrives, but thank you, Kristen, I really appreciate it. Thank you, everybody, from Kelly to Bryce to Lauren and Kristen, thank you very much, and thank you for the administration supporting me with all my talk and questions and everything else, thank you.
Thanks, Joan.
And I love my education, of course.
Okay, educational policy, none of this time, policy development and distribution, we had a lot of that earlier, none of this time. Personnel items, distribution of personnel report?
So, in your packet, we have a few changes. We successfully hired a nurse for an EDP, which has been a challenging position to fill. We added a special education teacher, Melk in middle school, we're very excited about. And then, we have a retirement. And then we have a retirement, Bruce Williams, who is the technology engineering teacher at Mellican Middle School, who is retiring at the end of this month. We will ask him to come back to the January meeting to recognize him. And then unfortunately, we had a couple of resignations. Important to note that Jennifer Persons, who is the clerical instructional aide at Lincoln Street School, decided to go back to her private work, going into the private sector. Just a different set of salaries that that one gets, so she's definitely will be missed. She did an excellent job.
Excellent job.
We told her that she's always welcome back if it doesn't work out.
Yeah.
She was always great.
Yeah, you can't argue with those. You just say, like, thanks, and then we'll take you back anytime.
Doors open.
Yeah. Okay. Communications, none of this time. Okay, so we have some actions on minutes. Let's see here, can we do all of these?
So the action on the executive session minutes is to accept and retain, if you choose to accept them.
Those were different than the executive session minutes, though. They were not.
Correct.
Yeah. So I will take a a vote, oh, sorry, I will take a motion to to, sorry, listen to me again. So the action on the open meeting minutes of November fifth and the action on the executive session minutes are to, not.
To approve.
To approve and retain. Both of those are to approve and retain.
The first two are just to approve, you just need to approve.
Okay.
Actually.
Sorry.
The first one is to approve.
Two, we have to approve and retain, right?
Okay.
So one and, one and.
So I'll take a motion to approve the open meeting minutes of November fifth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Kristen, second by Joan. Roll call vote, Kristen?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
And I am a yes, that is unanimous. Okay, I will take a vote to approve and retain the executive session minutes of November fifth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Moved by, moved by Kristen, second by Joan. Roll call vote, Kristen?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That moves unanimously, and then I will need to approve the operational budget subcommittee joint special open meeting minutes of November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Kristen, second by Joan. Roll call vote, Kristen?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, that's unanimous. Okay, thank you. Moving to future agenda items, FY twenty-seven recommended budget presentation. Are you gonna do that in January, or do you want some more time?
I think let us see how far.
Okay.
So we'll let you know.
Understood. Outdoor learning space discussion, it's been punted a couple times, but interesting to think about it in January, but that sounded like a boop from the owl.
Joan?
Okay, from the owl down here, could I add two things? I'd like to learn a little bit more about the staple, the special education stabilization fund, just a little more of an introduction on that or an education. Excuse me, and then this, oh, the second one was about a report from tomorrow, tomorrow's meeting from the CPA on the fields at Mellican, an update. That's it, those two things.
So also, our presentation cycle does, we have two potential presentations, either January or February. We have MCAS and also Selby Oil presenting her multilingual learner update.
Nice.
So Stephanie will get to choose which month she presents.
Very cool. Wield that power. Any other future agenda items?
Yeah, I have on it now.
Oh, we're gonna have calendar on here.
Oh. That was, it was related to the ca, so in relation to the calendar and the discussion, I didn't jump in, because it was just Southborough, but when Laura was talking about, like, what markers are we using to measure whether this calendar is helping? I think it would be great to understand more about that, like, do we have things in place? Because we need to be thinking about them now, rather than get two years down the road, three years down the road and say, oh, we don't know what the impact was, right?
Yeah, what was the anecdote, or what was the actual data point? Yeah.
Right, yeah, that would be great to hear, okay, here's ways that we could actually measure the impact, if there is one. Because sometimes I think it's two days, there's, may not see a difference, or maybe may see a difference and be like, well, it's attributed to all these other changes that, right, are probably pretty large comparatively.
I think it's important to think about, see if we can identify some, some benchmarks and goals.
Right, and even if it's a survey from kids, like, I will say anecdotally, my middle schoolers seem to, like, because they get a day to, like, breathe, right? And sometimes that's, they need that, like, when they're, it gets a little harder, eighth grade is tougher than previous grades, and sometimes it's, when you can just take a day to breathe or catch up or whatever, it's really beneficial. And that might be a hard, it's a hard metric to have measured, yeah.
Just a question around the calendar conversation. We also have the feasibility, information for the feasibility roof. So, like I shared earlier, we might need a special open meeting to talk, at a minute, and talk about the roof before the submission, so I'll work with Bryce on trying to find a time.
Okay. Audience sharing. Seeing none. I will take a motion to adjourn the Northborough K through eight at eight forty-six PM.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Kristen, second by Joan. Roll call vote, Kristen?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
I am a yes. We are adjourned at eight forty-six PM. Thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Welcome, Joan. Good night, Lauren.
Good night.